Good evening, everybody. So we're opening our virtual meeting. It is now 5:03 PM, so calling the meeting to order. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular virtual board meeting tonight that all can participate in remotely. You can join via Zoom. Specific directions on how to participate are located on the Board of Education webpage on the district's website, NVUSD.org/Board. The open session part of the meeting agenda begins at 7:00 PM. We're moving on to item B, Public Comment on Closed Session Items. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Is there any public comment on closed session items, Mr. Ruiz?
Do not have any public comments at this time, Vice President Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. Seeing that there are none, the Napa Valley Unified School District will now adjourn into closed session. Thank you. Oh, one. Report from closed session?
There is no report from closed session.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Isela Martin, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting this evening that all can participate in remotely. You can join at this. Buenas noches, mi nombre es Isela Martin. Y somos el Consejo Escolar del Distrito Escolar del Valle de Napa. NVUSD, por sus siglas en inglés. La Junta Regular del Consejo Escolar de NVUSD, donde se puede participar remotamente, se puede unir a Zoom. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. To access interpretation from a computer, click on the interpretation icon on the button on your screen from within the Zoom application. On a mobile device, click on the More button on the bottom of your screen and choose Language Interpretation from within the Zoom application. This is a separate channel that will allow you to hear English-to-Spanish translation concurrently. Please note, interpretation services are not available when you join our meeting by calling in. Our interpreters for tonight, for tonight's meeting, are Julie Young and Paul Huertas. Julie, please translate these directions on our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families can hear the instructions.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Buenas tardes a todos. Estamos ofreciendo interpretación en vivo en español. ¿Me escuchan?
Sí.
Okay. Estamos ofreciendo interpretación en vivo en español durante esta reunión. Si desea escuchar la interpretación en español, busque el icono que se encuentra en la parte inferior derecha de la pantalla de Zoom. Haga clic en el botón Interpretación. O Interpretation. Verá un icono de un globo terráqueo o de un mapa mundi. Hágale clic ahí. Si se está uniendo a través de la aplicación Zoom para smartphone, seleccione su idioma haciendo clic en More o Más en los puntos en la esquina inferior derecha de la pantalla. Seleccione Language Interpretation, o Interpretación del Idioma. Luego elija Español o Spanish y haga clic en Done. Si desea escuchar solo a los intérpretes, no a los oradores originales, asegúrese de hacer clic en Mute Original Audio, o Silenciar Audio Original. Escoja un idioma. Todos deben escoger un idioma. Y si está llamando de una línea telefónica, no tiene la opción de poder escuchar la interpretación. Gracias.
Thank you, Julie. Specific instructions on how to participate in the meeting are located on the Board of Education webpage on the district's website, NVUSD.org/Board. Can we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales?
Yes. Trustee Martin?
Present.
Trustee Gonzalez Mares?
Present.
Trustee Jenkowitz? Trustee Water?
Present.
Trustee Hurtado?
Present.
Trustee Shank?
Present.
Trustee Gracia?
Student Board Member Magaña? Coram, present. Thank you. Thank you, Vera. Thank you for joining us tonight for our Napa Valley Unified School District Board Meeting. Public participation remains virtual, online only, due to the COVID-19 shelter-in-place order. We continue in uncharted territory as we deal with COVID-19 pandemic. As trustees, we have returned to the boardroom in solidarity with our staff, given that our school campuses are now reopened for our students. However, in order to ensure access to our meetings without any limitations during the persisting pandemic, we are continuing with online remote access via Zoom for the public and guests. I would like to thank our employees, our families, and the entire NVUSD community for how you have supported each other and come together during these unprecedented times. The meeting tonight is in accordance with the open meeting rules in the state of California per the governor's order. I'm going to start tonight with some basic instructions on how we're going to be using Zoom and involve the members of the community. All Board of Trustees and the superintendent are on video throughout the entire board meeting from here in the boardroom. Other staff members are present, but only by audio. Members of the community will not be on video and will be muted except during public comment. During public comment, any member of the community that wishes to speak must raise their hand using the Raise Hand feature in Zoom. You'll be unmuted and you will be provided three minutes to speak. There are two ways to make a public comment within the time allotted for public comment on an eligible agenda item. To comment by video conference, click the Raise Your Hand button to request to speak when public comment is being taken on eligible agenda items. When it is your turn to speak, your name will be called out. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. Instructions on how to raise your hand are available on the district website at NVUSD.org/Board. To comment by phone, you will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing *9 to request to speak when public comment is being taken on eligible agenda items. When it is your turn to speak, the last four digits of your phone number will be called out. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comment. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. Instructions on how to raise your hand by phone are available on the district website at NVUSD.org/Board. In addition, community members were allowed to submit public comments via email at publiccomment@nvusd.org up until 8:00 AM this morning. Public comment received after 8:00 AM the day of the scheduled meeting will not be read into the record. However, the public comment will be announced as received after the deadline, and it will become a part of the meeting archive as long as it is received before the meeting is officially called to order. For every agenda item, I will prompt the meeting participants who have joined us via Zoom for public comment. Please follow the instructions just provided when you would like to comment on an item. We have been called to order and conducted our attendance roll call. We will go forward with our agenda. We have no report from closed session. Please join me in the flag salute while Mr. David Gracia leads us.
The audience would please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is recorded for live streaming and archiving on the district's YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda, the archived video can be referenced, located on the district webpage at NVUSD.org. The public can view the virtual board meeting remotely via Zoom. Participation instructions and the process for public comment can be found on our district webpage. Before we approve the agenda, I'd like to move presentations and discussion items I-1A. So move. After public comment. I have a first from Ms. Elba Gonzalez Mares.
Second.
And a second by Mr. David Gracia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Student representative?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approval of minutes?
So move.
First by Mr. Shank and a second by Mr. Hurtado. You guys are adorable tonight. Stop trying to make me cry already. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Student representative?
Aye.
Abstention? Motion passes. Recognition of visitors and employee organizations? Mr. Ruiz, do we have Ms. Leslie Walder from NAPS present tonight? Leslie, if you're present, if you could please raise your hand. Mr. Ruiz? Ms. Leslie Walder, is she present tonight?
Yes, I just unmuted her mic. She has to unmute her mic.
Hi, Leslie. Do you want to say tonight, do you want to say hello this evening?
I'm not sure. She's not responding, Dr. Musetti.
Okay, all right. Well, welcome, Ms. Walder. Thank you for joining us. Is Ms. Gail Young on this evening? Do you see Ms. Gail Young as a participant?
I do not see Ms. Gail Young tonight.
Okay, she let me know that she may be joining the meeting a little later, but I did want to let the public and the board members know. Our retiring trustees tonight, the poinsettias that have been laid in front of your seat are from the Napa Valley Educators Association, so that's a gift from them. And they wanted to, to give you a farewell gift. So thank you to Ms. Young and the Napa Valley Educators Association. And Edgar Ventura or Hector, are they on tonight? They did not tell me that they would be here, but do you see them, Mr. Ruiz?
I do not, Dr. Musetti, but let me, let's try to get Leslie Walder back online.
Okay.
Good evening. This is Leslie Walder speaking. Can you hear me?
Hi, Leslie. Thank you.
Yes. Good evening, President Martin, Superintendent Musetti, and I'm the Leslie Walder. I'm the president of the NAPS Association of People's Services.
Thank you, Leslie, for being here. Moving forward with the agenda, public comments on non-agenda items. Members of the audience may address the board on any school-related matter that is not on the agenda. The board will not take action on any issue raised during the section of the agenda inasmuch as board action is limited to posted agenda items. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes. Mr. Ruiz, do we have any public comment?
President Martin, we do. We can start with Norm Ortiz. Go ahead, Norma. You've been muted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Dear Board members, Ms. Martin, Mr. Shank, and Mr. Hurtado. I never thought I was going to be here at this date and time to say these words. And here I am today because this is how I feel. I personally want to thank you for your time, commitment, dedication, and policy at Napa Valley Unified School District. Moreover, thank you for all your decisions in benefit of our English learners, elac, dilac. That means a lot to my daughter, who is a student at Napa Valley Unified School District, including myself, and for doing your best to overall support our students with program solutions, honoring our culture, traditions, value systems, beliefs, building community in our school system, the inclusion of parents and community members like myself via public comment. Mr. Hurtado, I want to acknowledge the 16 years that you have served in this board. The same to you, Mr. Shank, 12 years, and Ms. Martin, four, in support of our Latino population and the community as a whole. That important aspect of representing all of the different ethnic groups and our interests needs is very much appreciated. But at the same time, being cautious, paying close attention to areas of most impact, and caring for the most underserved and vulnerable communities is too. Thank you for embracing our Mayan and Aztec ancestry in this context, welcoming and being attentive to the community's comments and my points of view. That ambition for a better future in education changes here in many ways. Look how far we've come with your support and passion because you were and are all leaders in your own capacity with your own styles. You spoke from your heart and your own personal experiences when times were challenging. I feel progress has been made, and I am aware and confident that you will continue to do and accomplish much more in the fields of education. After being a part of several of our board meetings, I found the need to learn more and more in such agenda items, topics of discussion. The same about your perspectives and roles. Whichever way you choose to go next, your family is here, Napa Valley Unified School District. And you will always be remembered in a very special and unique way for all of your contributions. Thank you for supporting our students, parents, staff members, and our community under these unprecedented times with COVID. Ms. Martin, your smile and laughter will be missed. Mr. Hurtado, please know that it has been a pleasure hearing your comments based on observation and what I have heard during these meetings. I can tell you're a very compassionate and warm person. Quote, "It has been an honor to serve for 16 years in this board, and I can feel where you are coming from with this comment." Mr. Shank, I honor you as a person for sharing so much wisdom with us. It was from you who I have learned the most. You're such a humble human being, and I just feel you have so much knowledge to share. Quote, "I've decided to step down and make room for others. Thank you for empowering others in your community, and I am sure you know what I mean by that. Thank you for making the choice of being here and making a difference in my child's life in regards to education. Good night."
Thank you so much. I can't say any much, I can't say much more because if not, we won't get anywhere tonight. But thank you so much for your message.
Yeah, one more public comment, President Martin, Thomas Kentschak. Go ahead, Thomas.
I just wanted, am I unmuted?
Yes, sir.
We can hear you.
All right. Well, my comments are going to sound a great deal like those of Ms. Ortiz. I checked in this evening because I wanted to honor the three of you who are outgoing board members, starting with Isela. Your upbeat optimism and warmth were a big deal. I didn't serve with you as long as the other two, but you made a difference during the time that you were there. You brought a voice, a voice that was needed. You sometimes said what needed to be said, but you also connected with the other members of the board. And that makes a difference when you're sitting there thinking, oh, I've got a school board meeting tonight, and there's unhappiness around and so on. And you think, well, Isela is going to be there. She's going to suck it up and do what needs to be done, and I'm going to show up as well. And so we do show up. Now you other two. I always resented the fact that you guys had hair. I didn't let that stop me from listening to what you had to say. And it was truly an honor to sit with the two of you for 14 years. Some of the people, and I look around the room there, and I see that actually there's no one in the room that may remember that Joe Shank has actually spent more than 16 years in that boardroom. Joe Shank has been a voice of wisdom, and he's also a voice in which the fact that he has done his homework shows up. Joe Shank came to every board meeting for at least two years because I was there before he came on the board, and maybe longer. And I always made it a point to listen to Joe Shank. When Joe Shank, not that I didn't listen on other subjects, but when Joe Shank stepped up to the microphone even before he was on the board to address an issue on special ad. Jose Hurtado, I don't know that anyone on the board during my time had as deep and as long of roots in the Napa Valley. As Ms. Ortiz just pointed out, you have spoken up for Latino issues. I listened during my time there. I hope others have continued to listen because of the fact that you have such a long view of what has taken place, where we've been. I'd also like to thank you for serving as a lightning rod on certain things. Maybe that wasn't your choice, but you handled it, and you handled it well. I see my time is up. So in the end, thank you very much to all of you.
Let's go next with Chuck Neidhoffer. Go ahead and unmute your mic, Chuck, if you'd like to make a public comment. All right. Let's go with Jay Hurtado Macari.
Sí, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Josefina Hurtado. Macari. Gracias por esta oportunidad de reconocer a la Mesa Directiva de Napa de la Escuela de Contado de Napa.
One moment, por favor.
Sí, estoy de acuerdo.
Do we want to have, I need to pull in the other, the interpreters to do this.
Oh, I can do it in English. I'm sorry.
Okay. It's whatever you prefer.
I will go ahead.
Okay.
Yes, good evening. First, I'd like to say thank you for this opportunity to acknowledge my brother, Jose Hurtado, Dr. Shank, and señorita Isela. First, I'm very proud to say and very proud of my brother and many years of service to the Napa community. May my brother's service continue to inspire many more individuals that have served our community. Now.
Josefina, we can't hear you.
I'd like to say this is to my hermano, Jose, for his service to the community of Napa. His many years of service have been with a lot of passion and dedication. He's a man who sincerely loves his community. And for Dr. Shank and the señorita Isela, equally, thank you for his service and dedication. Gracias.
Thank you, Josefina. Mr. Ruiz, do we have any more public comment?
We do. Chuck Neidhoffer.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Manuel. I'm just checking in personally. I'm sorry that we can't have kind of an in-person mixer as we have in the past. But of course, these are unusual times. As an employee and as someone who's worked with the district for so long, I just want to personally show up to thank you who have shown up so many times for so many hours and just really put your best efforts forward on such important issues that seem to face the district every year. You know, you finish a year and you think, gosh, a lot happened that year. And then the next year comes along, and every year has its new boatload of surprises and rivers to ford. Ms. Martin, I really appreciate how often I saw you at school events and your kind of proactive outreach to individual school sites. Mr. Shank, I always appreciated your eagle eye. And as Tom commented earlier, your study of the issues and you really helped me, even as an employee, when I was presenting to the board, understand repercussions of issues sometimes further than I was thinking myself. And that's just real value added, and I understand you did that over and over and over again in your years of service. Very thoughtful questions, and I would just want to thank you for all that homework. And Mr. Hurtado, you know, the role that you've played in our board and in our community is hard to overstate. And your previous experience with the college and bringing that knowledge and just personal commitment from the city into your relationship with the school board and connecting that with our K-12 students. There's just no way that one can value that. And I just appreciate the way that you approached issues, your generosity, the generosity you had with your time, your thoughtfulness, your kindness. Just, I guess, all in all, it's going to be an incredible loss to us in terms of institutional memory and commitment when the three of you leave. And I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, from someone who loves the district as much as you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Monica, ready?
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Rosana Musetti, and the larger Napa community. I would like to thank the Board of Education for creating and upholding the policies that allow NVUSD administrators to rise up in the face of challenge and lead. It is because of your courage, integrity, and commitment to each and every child that we can lead each day. One of numerous examples that I can give is that we are one of 70 school districts open to in-person learning at a time when our students need to be in class. I would like to personally thank trustee Hurtado, Shank, and Martin for your presence. You show up on campus and events to connect with our community, and you listen, and you show you care. Thank you for your years of service from Napa High School.
Thank you, Monica.
And that concludes our public comment. President Martin.
Thank you very much. We are now moving to item I-1A, General Services Presentation and Discussions. So, good evening, Napa Valley Unified School District community. Tonight is a business meeting, but it's a very special business meeting and most likely an emotional one, so I'm just going to warn everyone now. Tonight, we say farewell to an amazing trio of trustees who, with all of their years of service combined, have committed 30 years of public service to the students, families, and employees of the Napa Valley Unified School District. I'm just going to warn everyone that I will be your superintendent who cries in public this evening. Trustees Hurtado, Shank, and Martin have made such a powerful, deep impression on me as an educator, a leader, a superintendent of schools, a friend, and just human that it is difficult to say goodbye and facilitate this transition this evening without tearing up or choking up. Trustees Hurtado, Shank, and Martin, the three of you will always hold a very special place in my heart. You are all members of the board who hired me in the spring of 2018, almost three years ago now. You changed my life forever because you gave me this unique opportunity to serve as your first female Latina superintendent. in this very special community that I can now comfortably, confidently, and warmly call my professional home. After my husband Orlando and I met all of you and had dinner during the second phase of the superintendent selection process, I remember that we both agreed on the drive home that if I was selected for the position of superintendent for the Napa Valley Unified School District, I would be working with and for caring, committed, brilliant, compassionate, supportive, and courageous public servants who cared about the education of the young people in their community and most importantly, cared about what was doing right for children. That was my first impression. I really wanted the job after I met the three of you. And that impression has held up as truth day after day over the last two and a half years if we've accomplished so much hard work together. The three of you have taught my novice superintendent self so much about leadership, community, and governance that the list of everything I have learned from each of you is just way too long for tonight. Tonight, we will honor the three of you for all that you've accomplished in service to past, current, and future generations of Napa Valley Unified School District students. You will all be sorely missed, but know that your impact and influence will never be forgotten. Our farewell presentation tonight is delivered with love, appreciation, pride, and gratitude. We appreciate every governance decision that you have made to improve the educational lives of students. We are proud of how you have approached your governance roles with integrity and honesty always. And we are grateful for the work, the time, the stress, the sacrifices of your families, and the unwavering commitment to kids, even in the toughest times, that each of you have demonstrated repeatedly. Tonight, it is an honor as the superintendent of schools of NVUSD alongside your colleague trustees to present each of you with the NVUSD Distinguished Service Award for your years of service and a Glass Gavel Recognition Award for the years that each of you have served as the board president. So let's get started with our current board president, President Isela Martin. Isela, you have taught me to be fierce, passionate, and honest. Thank you for your leadership, your insights into complex situations, for always opening your heart about the struggles within our educational community, for being the voice of those struggles, for your passion for ensuring educational equity for our Latinx students, and for reminding me always with every decision in every board meeting that all children, no matter what their barriers may be, have the potential for greatness. You have demonstrated that there is strength in vulnerability. Your willingness to tell your story and how your personal journey motivated you to fight to get on this school board is beyond admirable. Your willingness to always find a solution even when the problem seems impossible to solve has helped me so much these last couple of years. Thank you for serving as our board president in this last year. You helped me learn so much about the NVUSD community so quickly because of your openness and your welcoming, warm approach. Tu corazón y amistad have been invaluable to me. Muchas gracias. So we want to present President Mark Ten with the distinguished I want to do by the mic here. Service Award. President Martin has four years of service as a trustee. Just take it a hurry down. And we'd also like to present her with the president's gavel recognition for her years of service as board president. President Martin was named president in December of 2019. So I would like to invite the trustees to share any words that they may have in saying farewell to President Martin.
Well, to the families of trustee Schunk, trustee Hurtado, and trustee Martine, thank you. They have been fully dedicated to their role as a trustee and they could not, and that could not be done without the support of family. So our gratitude is certainly extended to all of you as well. Trustee Martine. Isela has always championed fairness, equity, and it's been steadfast in her beliefs. I have admired her strength and her grit. Isela, through her thoughtful work on the board, has stood for inclusion and has been committed to the ongoing sustainable transformation within NVUSD. She has thought intentionally about the issues we have grappled with and has taught us that we have the power to impact and learn from every person we come in contact with. She has demonstrated conviction and her moral compass always points due north. I can't look at you, I lose my place. Through her community engagement and outreach, she has been a powerful voice for NVUSD. Isela has always demonstrated an open mindset, listened with purpose and understanding, and has led with a collaborative approach. She has honored diversity of thinking and worked diligently to support all of the students of Napa Valley Unified. She played an instrumental role in guiding our mission. I am grateful for her insight, her expertise, and her huge heart. And while boards do not need to be comprised of people that genuinely like each other, I guess we have been blessed. Thank you for your fierceness and fervency and of course, your dedicated service, always done with a smile and compassion, which has been an added bonus.
We can go down the line.
I'm going to go down next.
Um, I was just surprised that I still had two years left because it's been weeks in the process. We'll go one by one. We both started our, our journey as school board members. I didn't know you then, but I knew you were up to the task because you ran with such dedication and perseverance and with such purpose. And having also your, your children part of the district. I know you were coming in with a very strong voice. And you always brought that to the discussion because we're board members, but we're, we're humans at the start of all of this. We're people, but we care very much about the community that we live in. And you modeled that. And what most people don't know about Isela is that she models at 24 hours. If the day had 37, she'd probably continue. And if it had 40, she'd go on. There is this amazing strength with that, that as you walk in the room, there's sort of this elevation to, to meet that. And I am honored and I feel so proud to have worked alongside you and to have been in your presence as we tackled since day one very difficult issues. But always with a reminder and every time we spoke that at the, at the, at the center of it all was our, was our students and our families. And I will never forget that. And I always love that feeling that you give. It, it's one of those things I, I've, I've gone through my shares of saying goodbyes multiple times to people that I know that I'll never, you know, either, I don't know if I'll see them again or not. You just don't, don't know how life works. But I will never forget how you made us all feel and myself in this journey and helping and being part of the change and the solutions to help our, our beloved community and our students and their families thrive and be the best that they can be. So thank you and thank you also to the family for lending us Isela, which was quite a lot. So thank you.
Well, this is to all the, all the, God, don't make me cry. I left a gift on the table for my colleagues who will be leaving us. And I want you to look at that dollar amount. FPPC regulations say that you have, well, they imply that you have to give me a penny each or you're going to have to declare that as a campaign contribution. And you do not want to get in trouble. Okay, just remember, that would be so mortifying.
We're, we're good for it.
Okay, good, 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 good. And, and this is to trustee Martin. Life is full of change. I am sorry, I will not be working for you, with you over the next few years. I cannot think of a person who would have been better leading us through these very strange times. I appreciate your leadership, your warmth, your sense of humor, you know, and the, you, you gave us all the feeling that we were going to get through this, you know, somehow. And your life is, in spite of the pandemic, moving forward in a positive way, isn't it? Both professionally and personally. She's smiling actually through her tears. And by the way, I want everyone to know that I voted for Isela Martin back before district elections. I voted for you because you were the only candidate running who was talking about academic achievement, which I was actually interested in. And, but you know, Isela, Isela is really much more than that because, because of Isela's life experience and the work you do, your, your job, you have a deep knowledge of our children's lives. And I'm going to miss that perspective very much. And onward however, and most definitely upward, one of the most fun experiences I've had was going to the Day of the Dead event over, you know, over at the Boys and Girls Club, you know, you helped put that on. That was wonderful. And last year I went to, back when we used to go to parties, I went to the Hispanic Network's Christmas party and Isela sang. She looked so beautiful. She sang in front of all these people. It would abandon everything and it was, I just was floored. I didn't know she had, she has incredible pipes, folks. I mean, you know, if she wants to give up, you know, all this, you know, working, working with agricultural workers. I mean, there's something else, there's something else out there for her. And Isela, I just want you to just, you know, keep moving forward, keep singing. I, I really, I wish you so much joy. Thank you so much for everything you gave us. And, and like the other two gentlemen, you, you cared about, you care about all of us in Napa. You always put the children first. Thank you so much.
I think from the very first time I met Isela and when she was considering running for trustee, we hit it off. I believe she would bring a positive energy to the board and she has. She has done the yeoman's job as president this past year. First among equals, holding the board to account, presiding over meetings in a unique setting of Zoom. It's required adapting an in-person presence to a telepresence. This was never covered in any of the CSBA conferences we attended. And you handled it with aplomb. It's been a year or change for you and I wish you the very best in your multifaceted future. Good luck.
I remember receiving a phone call from, I don't know, might have been, I can't remember who it was, asking me if I would mind talking to Isela, is what they said, Martin, who was interested in running for the board. And so we said that and I, you know, why not? I was going to get a cup of coffee out of it. So I said, why not? And, you know, the, I figured that the conversation would last at least as long as the coffee. And I think we ended up spending almost two hours outlining issues, addressing what you thought might have been holes in your resume that I thought were absolutely pluses. And, and we talked about that. And then I remember after the election, you worrying for at least a couple of weeks because you were only 200 votes in the lead. And I kept telling you, you're fine, you're in, you know, let's get you fitted for the chair and let's, let's move forward. But what I saw back then, Isela, and I want you to keep this in mind, is that I saw somebody with a, with a real future, real future in leadership. The, the ability to connect with people, to understand the problems and issues of our community from a perspective that isn't always representative or isn't even represented or even appreciated by, by some. You have a real ability. You have a gift that, you know, it doesn't belong to you. The gift belongs to your community. And I will be there in the future when you decide to give this another go. You can count on me. I truly appreciate your presence on the board.
So much has already been said. I think I'll keep my remarks a little briefer. I admire your dedication to good governance and how passionately you're committed to it. Thank you for always pushing the team to strive for that good governance. I appreciate you being an example to the rest of us about how good governance ought to be performed and your willingness to passionately advocate for the things that you believe in.
So trustee Shuck. Wow. I want you to know that I'm allowed tonight to have a repeated stay in the office, especially during this last month. Should I do the research myself or should we just call Joe? In the last one, being the disciplined person that I am, we decided that it's better that I can use doing the research on my own. That's been a painful reality I have reluctantly come to accept. In my near decade of senior leadership in the school system, I don't think I've ever met a board member with your knowledge. You are absolutely brilliant. You've served as the wisest of us when it comes to the theoretical, the philosophical, the political, and of course, the practical and pragmatic aspects of the work we do as the district's government's team. I have told you that if I ever teach a university course on effective governance, I will be using hours and hours of Joe Schumpf footage from YouTube to demonstrate and exemplar of school district governance. Thank you for all the times you took my phone calls and you grounded me in logic, seriousness, and just a huge well of integrity. I know that you've been my anchor for the last two and a half years and the anchor of many of us sitting up here on so many days. You're the first board president ever that I got to work with. And I've always hold you dear in my heart. Thank you for creating the highest standards for our current board, the new board that's onboarding next week, and for every future board member that I will work with. I know I am going to sit in this boardroom starting next week, many times asking myself quietly in my mind, what will trustee Shuck do or say in this very moment? So thank you for being a humble, exceptional role model for everyone. It's been an honor working with you. So, we're going to present trustee Shuck, who serves for... Can I get a picture? Sorry, sorry, Frank. So trustee Shuck has 12 years of service plus, I guess, because he spent a lot of hours in this board. And trustee Shuck was appointed president in 2010 and 2017. Um, and 2017, so the last gap.
Okay, trustees, um, so I'd like to invite you to share any words that you may have to say farewell to trustee Shuck.
Okay, okay, I'll go.
Go ahead, trustee.
Well, trustee Shuck, uh, we met at board meetings many years ago when you and I were frequently the only innocent bystanders there. You know, the, the board, the board meetings were gen- they were not hot ticket. There was plenty of room, you wouldn't have to worry about catching COVID back then, um, because no one was there except, you know, us. And I remember, uh, once two other gentlemen showed up and moved up to the, up to the, um, lectern and I was really excited, I was thinking maybe, maybe they'd do something like complain about the state of the libraries or whatever and nope. Instead, they grouched about how terrible the vintage high football team was that year. And I was completely deflated and, you know, Joe, of course, thought that was hilarious. I'm going to miss the occasional Sunday phone call where I could always get the historical perspective. But I will really miss Joe's humor. Probably everybody here knows that he has a very dry, rural, deadpan delivery, um, that I can never emulate, but I know I can see it on the NVUSD version of the Wayback Machine, which is, you know, our video recordings, you know, on YouTube, videos of meetings passed and I, I will, I'll just, and I, people have heard this a million times, but it was so funny, I was going back, um, looking up something about getting into some charter school and there is, and I just hit it, bingo, and Joe's voice comes up, these tendentious sepulchral tones. I am not a leprechaun, I do not have a bag of money. And I just started laughing. And yet, now, so he has established himself as a fiscal conservative and this is true, this is true, given his, you know, background and looking out, he's a numbers guy, but last March, when the pandemic hit, he was the first person to say, what about delivering lunches, what about food delivery to our kids? Okay, and Joe, I will always remember that about you, you know, this, this occasionally kind of crusty person, just like, like all the trustees cares about the kids, the kids come first. So thank you very much, Joe, uh, for the companionship, you know, when you, before you and I were ever on the board, sitting out there in the audience and all the laughs. And okay, I'll confess, this is totally, uh, Tom Kentsak brought it up with the hair. But after one of our, after our first Zoom meeting, I called him up. His hair was so radiant, it's like whiter than Mike Pence's hair. And I, and I called him up and said, what do you wash your hair with? What's the secret? Because it was just like this amazing flaming white halo on the screen. I was thinking, I could use some of that, but no, it's not going to happen. But, your family is going to be glad to have you back.
I can go next. Joe, um, you know, when, when, one of the first conversations we had, which right away told me so much about you, and it was you and it was trustee Kentsak. And, um, and I asked you, you know, in the board packet, how long does it take you to go through it? And, um, and Joe said, well, at least, you know, eight hours or so. And Tom was like, whoa. And I remember going like, oh, wow. And it's, you know, i- i- it's depending on the meeting, it, it's, it's so much in there that I don't think anybody but you looks at it like a page turner, like a good book. As I go through it, I'm like, oh my gosh, okay, what is all me, what is all me, all of this? And I think Joe was literally like, mm, yeah, that's a good line, yeah, you know, and that's a quote, I don't know, like you'd see it as a good novel. You know, those are the, the, the ups and downs of, of being in this role, right? Um, and it's all important and you're, you're just this walking history book and manual book. The to-do's, this is what you do. And it's, you put it in such simple terms and it's right, it was such logic. And it, it almost makes it look easy, but it's this years of history and of course, your brilliant mind and how it works. And then all of a sudden, just all wrapped up and ready to go to be like, this is what we should do. This is what I think and this is why. And that's what you bring every single time. And this community and the students and the families, what's so hard about this role is that many of them don't know who they're indebted to. And that goes without saying with you, Joe, and also to your family for lending them to us all these many years. And just the amazing positive impact you have made to generations and generations of this community. And that, um, I, I'm thankful for that because I know that decisions that you've made are helping more and more of the generations to come. So thank you, Joe, for setting a, a, a good example and being a model, but just for simply being Joe. So thank you.
When, um, I had a very interesting, uh, career on the board. One of the roles that I, I was given, just almost by acclamation, was being the board bouncer. The other one was being the board, mentor to some of our less capable board members. And I remember spending hours with, with, and I'm sure you remember the board member, in trying to, um, um, guide her in how the board does its work. And, and finally, after hours and hours and hours of trying to get this board member to understand that this is really hard work and, and you need to assist them. I finally just said, just watch Joe during the meeting. You know, and especially in issues that have to do with technology or finance. Listen to the way he, he, he dissects the, the issue. Of course, it didn't help, that was beyond, but, but that's kind of how I, how I approach technology and finance. I just, um, and, and I had to tell you, um, when I was, my first few meetings on this side of the, of the table, I would look out there and I'm wondering, what are those two characters, who are those two? And you know, it was Cindy and, and Joe. And I asked Tom, uh, Kentsak, my, my friend, who, you know, it's like the, the line in, in Butch Cassidy and the Sundance Kid, who are those guys? And the response says that, you know, that Joe knows more about, uh, special ed and, and money than we do. So it was refreshing to me that you finally came and sat down next to me. Because, you know, I understand, and poor, uh, Robin has, has got a glimpse of that. I don't understand finances very, very much. My wife will attest to that. But I certainly learned more from your questions and your statements about what the direction we were going. And, and you're, and I enjoyed your sense of humor, I, I really, I would like to think that you and I are friends as a result of all this, so. Thank you, you're an honored, honored member. Thank you.
All right.
You're the closer tonight, trustee.
I guess. Trustee Shunk, he's been involved with NVUSD for many years, even prior to taking his seat as a trustee. This lent itself to one of the things I appreciate most about Joe, which was he always had a deep historical perspective on how the district had gotten to any specific point. He was always drawing on his depth of knowledge around the history of NVUSD in order to bring an interesting and often important perspective on where the district had come from in prior decision-making processes. Sitting next to Joe for most of my tenure, I had a unique opportunity to see him model the behavior of an experienced board member. I also came to appreciate Joe's favorite motion at any meeting, which I think he made at most meetings, which was our motion to adjourn. He would take pride in reminding us all that it was the only motion never to have failed.
All right, okay. Um, trustee Urtado, last but not least, of course. Thank you for exemplifying what it truly means to stand up for what you believe in every time. And I mean every time. The alignment between your values and actions and everything that you do and in every interaction I've ever had with you over the past almost three years has left such a positive, deep impression on me. You have led our team through challenges with serenity, compassion, but a firm and steady hand. You have served as a mentor for me and I hope that you will continue to teach me and others in our community, what it means to lead with courage, to do the right thing, to do the best you can, and to humbly admit when we are wrong and do all that we can immediately to make it right. You have been a social justice warrior in this community, willing to stand up against racism and to embrace diversity, equity, and inclusion at all costs. Your fighting but graceful, patient spirit will live on in this boardroom for years to come. It's with great honor that we recognize the winner tonight, 16 years of service on the Napa Valley Unified School District School Board. 16 years right here?
16.
16, that's a long time. I know. Quintenera plus one.
You can drive now.
Okay, and listen to this, president's scowl recognition, start the years he was, uh, voted as president, years 2006, 2011, 2016, and 2018. Four years serving as board president. Okay, I'd like to invite the trustees to share any words they may have in saying farewell to trustee Urtado and or Shunk combined.
If you ever want to become humble, come to terms with how much you don't know, get known and respected to a school. I have learned a great deal over the last few years. I know everyone who listens to these two men. We hear what they're saying beyond their immediate words. They're of the story. They're approaching us. Get into my soul, the presence. By the same thing, to serve the students of Napa Valley Unified, and from that, they have never wavered. They have embodied this district, taken the time and care to execute each decision thoughtfully, critically, and with the understanding of the impact. The general public may not have liked every decision, but every decision came with the courage to do what was right on behalf of our students, even when what was best wasn't obvious to all. Don't underestimate the power of courage, the strength to withstand difficulty and to cultivate change. Multiple terms on a school board is a courageous act. They mentored us by displaying restraint, not always easy, Joe, and understanding boundaries while pushing them when necessary, Jose, all while educating us with the power of their questions. They voiced their opinions, they did so with respect and the institutional understanding of the journey that brought us to the why of where we are today. How lucky we have been. They have led and they have led by example.
Oh boy.
Trustee Shunk, our historian. Joe's ability and willingness to understand our history, create context and analytics that optimize the decision-making process, extract the relevant data to apply what is needed, all while keeping an eye on the future, is a skill that few possess. He understands what elements are needed as well as what elements might be missing and should be considered before determining outcomes. He is a true consumer of data, knowledge, and understands the relevance, the relationship, and the power of information. And although intuition is often considered a secondary skill, I would bet on Joe's every time. Let me define the power of Joe. Instead of taking copious notes during staff presentations, I, like many others, would jot down every single one of Joe's questions because his questions are thought-provoking and they demand reflection. He has taken the time to mentor new board members, myself included, and has done so by filling in some of the blanks in our thought processes. Therefore, forcing us to come to our own conclusions to understand the why. He uses conversations to teach. Sorry, hold on. He uses conversations to teach, hone our listening skills, and reminds us of our role in order to best serve. His reasoning, his logic are often expressed in Joeisms and we delight in his candor as he has made us appreciate that reasons matter and we have to understand the contribution before we can focus on completion. Joe can say more in three words than I can say in 300, and tonight is a perfect example. He embraces brevity and to our benefit. Joe has shown that dedication to the process means to determine where we are going so that we can better understand where we are now, so the steps we take are in the right direction. And that level of dedication requires us to think backwards, to begin with the end in mind, and then proceed forward. It might sound convoluted, but like with everything, Joe can simplify with profound accuracy, which stems from profound understanding. He has been exceptionally generous with his time and his thoughts and I am so grateful. And he will ever make me consider, what would Joe do? Just one moment, please. Trustee Per Tutter. Jose, our humanitarian, our storyteller. Jose has always had a way of positioning decisions within the context of an experience. He brings a human element to our dialogue, least we forget who we serve. His ability to infuse a little humanity into the challenges we have faced comes from his previous involvement in every aspect of the educational experience. He is a forever student. He has been a professor, educator, counselor, union negotiator, union president, and the list goes on. His perspective has expanded our understanding of complex issues and he always has that one perfect concluding statement that encapsulates our thoughts while providing much-needed clarity and insight. and he always has that one perfect concluding statement that encapsulates our thoughts while providing much-needed clarity and insight. He believes in civic duty and has set an incredibly high bar. Jose sat to my right when I first started on the board. I was nervous, and he would quietly study me. He spent many an hour weaving the tales that would help shape our experience and expand our understanding. Again, the gift of time and perspective from you two. Jose was never afraid to use his outside voice when needed. But more importantly, he was never afraid to use his voice. He used his platform as tentacles into this community and made education a conversation. Jose's respect for the human condition will always make me consider what would Jose do? You two have been critical bookends on this board. You have provided us with balance, perspective, understanding, and the importance of why. You threw in a bit of snarkiness along the way for good measure, and we will strive to work as hard as you did. It is impossible to measure your contribution, passion, dedication, and commitment. Commitment is often measured by what you are willing to give up, and that speaks volume to your character. We have had the ultimate opportunity for governance training. It really has been a privilege to serve alongside you. So saying thank you is the turning point between letting go of what's happened and embracing what's to come. We will, we will let go and feel grateful for what you have given and know that what is to come will always be influenced by what you so generously gave. Thank you to all three of you. Really love you guys.
So my question is, how much is the t-shirt?
It's kind of a two-for-one. It's like a two-for-one deal. It's a two-for-one, right?
I'm gonna have them made.
Depending on the situation. Jose, you and I met maybe a year or two before, a year before I started to consider joining the school board. And and one of the the aspects of, of, of meeting you and talking with you is that, I think, over the years now, you realize that without having to ask you to mentor, to mentor me, and most people don't realize that he's mentoring you along the way. Weeks later, you realize like, oh, he was actually teaching me something. And, and I think that is the kind of wisdom that is what we're going to miss. But we know you're, you're there, and we'll have that question in a minute, what would Jose do? But Jose, you, your leadership and your commitment to the community is, to me, it's something I strive for. I always say, like, I want to be like Jose when I grow up. And it's important, right? Because you need a guide to help you walk through the process of, of difficult situations. And because every day, and whenever, and we come to our board meetings, we know, and we come with that, with that, with that mindset, is that we're here to talk about lives. And but it's in our, in those difficult times, just so hard to know what to do and what's right. And, and it's always at those moments where we're all chatting, 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 and we're talking, and we're not sure, we're thinking out loud. And then here comes, you know, your wisdom that sets the tone, and it helps us see through, through that cloudiness, and the clarity comes, becomes clear. I'll miss you, but I know you're, you'll, you'll be there. And you're only a phone call away, although I feel like I don't use that lifeline too often, but I think knowing that you won't be in our meetings, I might just reach out. So thank you for, for all your years of service. And again, this community, the Napa community doesn't know at many times who they're indebted to. And I thank you for your service and for helping generations and generations. And also to the family, for again, lending us Jose all those years. Thank you. Muchas gracias.
Are you going to the end? She's gonna go next. Go ahead.
Okay. Trustee Hurtado, you and I have known each other, I guess, the longest. We used to run into each other a lot at cultural events involving students, and I believe even the graduation of a favorite Napa High, Napa Valley College student from Berkeley. And this is really no surprise, because with, with Jose Hurtado, it is all about the students. After No Child Left Behind and Program Improvement, I know this reminiscence, you know, it was just terrible time, I became a frequent and often the only presence at board meetings, where I was sometimes a pain in the neck, foreign in the side, stone in the shoe. Yeah, it's true. I know. Take your pick of metaphor. And still, when I came on the board, Jose was most welcoming, you know, he was glad to see me. And every so often, every so often, I mean, he really was, he was very, very welcoming. It was like all of, you know, the crankiness was just dissipated. Because we're on the same team, and every so often, you would tell us a story about your student radical days. And guess what, folks? I know they're all true. And I realized what a paradox you were, because from a youthful anti-establishment student at San Francisco State, because that was the place, right? What? At UC Davis, pardon me, at UC Davis, even better. You became, you became an official, you know, with a great respect for the institutions of government. Because, not, not because of the status, but because they signify public trust. It's, it's not about the office, it's about the fact that people believe you can do the job in the office. That's the important thing. And he never forgot that. And I also know that Jose was frequently, I believe Tom said that Tom Kinsock said that you were occasionally the lightning rod. You came in for the personal abuse. You know, saving, saving everyone else. And that was, you were sitting next to him, but it didn't like, hm, right there, and I think you're pretty good-humored about it. You really were. And I mean, I saw, I witnessed it a couple of times and thought, you know, he's a cool customer. I don't know what he's like when he gets home, but but in public, he was, he was pretty calm. Occasionally, we would get shrieked at by elected officials, and you were shocked at how they lowered themselves in their offices by behaving in an undignified manner. It wasn't, it wasn't that, you know, they're being abusive to me. It's like, you know, this is not what they're supposed to be doing in their position. And I, you've given me a lot of lessons, you know, over the years. And 16 years, 16 years. I mean, as I said earlier, you know, gee, old enough to drive. You can really enjoy your retirement now. You can read all the books you want to read. Right, that's right. Supposed to give back. And, and I know that when things open up, I go down to Napa Valley College and see a play, and you'll be there, you know. You'll, you'll be, I'll go to a concert to hear the kids sing. You'll be there too, you know. So this is, this is not goodbye. Just enjoy yourself. You have really worked hard.
The first few years I was on the board, Jose, I was absolutely convinced you were related to everyone in the valley. Every time, every time we met a new person, you were related to them by blood, marriage, or, or a shirt-tail relation. It, it took me a while to realize it wasn't true. Jose is a storyteller. That's how he makes his point when he's speaking. I've gotten to know Jose through his stories. Jose and I come at the work of the school board from two very different sets of life experiences. One element of our experiences have in common is our experiences of exclusion. And that wasn't okay with us. We have found common ground and common values born of different experiences. And I'd like to think that's how school boards are supposed to work. Since I've got the mic, I might as well hold on to it for a minute. When I started attending board meetings, the board packet was a couple of inches of dead trees. And the meetings weren't televised or recorded. The board packet got to me from Diane Mitchell in the superintendent's office, via inter-office mail to my son's school. He would pick it up in the school side office and bring it home in his backpack. I can say that my time on the board has been some of the most intellectually engaging work I've done in, aside from the early and middle part of my career. Part of that is the board is expected to be experts in a vast array of topics, whereas most employees and other stakeholders can focus on a particular discipline aspect or interest. I'd like to acknowledge the people that I've been working with the last couple of years. Elba is among our youngest trustees. Elba brings connections to multiple communities within our town. We are richer for having these perspectives and values embedded in our work. She is passionate and serious. I'm envious of her courage and success, and I wish I was half as accomplished at the same age. Cindy is unique in her perspective, as you might have gathered from her remarks tonight. She, like Jose, is a storyteller. Cindy, I think, is unique in that she's the only NVUSD trustee I know of that has served in public office, some would say higher office, prior to joining the school board. She brings a real politic to local politics that I think will stand the board in good stead. As others have mentioned, she and I have one thing in common. Over 12 years ago, we were frequent flyers at the public podium. I suppose I know David the least well. His contributions are many. I worry about his health. From the tank-sized Big Gulp to his relentless pursuit of perfection. I think he may be developing a modicum of patience along with stamina, which will stand him in good stead. Robin? I don't know that I've met someone as bright as Robin, who at the same time has a deep capacity to take in and feel the emotional content of the issues the board wrestles with. She is bright, humble, constantly learning, and better than she knows. You'll do fine. Dr. Messetti. Is everything we hoped when we hired her and more. In the past, I've had my tongue firmly planted in cheek and conveyed my sense of her to her. Nothing's changed my mind. We've shared any number of "only in Napa" moments, and I'm sure there will be more of them. I also want to acknowledge the dedication of the certificated, classified, and executive staff, sometimes seen, often unseen. They've risen to the occasion repeatedly and consistently during flood, fire, quake, pandemic, and fiscal famine. I never took their dedication and care for our students for granted. The current cabinet is, on the whole, younger, probably more skilled, and learning faster than their predecessors, and have a big adventure ahead of them. I wish you all well on the journey to the future. Our stakeholders underestimate the board and our desire to move beyond the status quo in many and varied ways. It is my hope the board continues that journey to beyond the status quo. Vera Morales is the latest in a long line of folks that have taken care of the board, and I appreciate her grateful assistance that I've received over these many years. Thank you. I want to acknowledge that my dad's here tonight. He's a good-looking fellow over there. He and my mother were here in this room 12 years ago when I was sworn in for the first time. He's been one of our viewers the last few years, but then again, he watches Calspan on the internet and listens to committee hearings of the state assembly and the state senate. The policy apple doesn't fall far from the tree. My son Zachary was here. He had to go to work. Jacob is still at work. They've also been supportive, even if that meant they simply stayed out of trouble and never appeared on our closed session agenda.
That's good.
Jacob has campaigned with me. Before I was on the board, he walked the neighborhoods with me for Measure G. And during my first campaign, he walked with me knocking on doors. My wife, Michelle, has been supportive of my public, then-elected, participation in the school board during and after our son's journey through the system these last 22 years. She has given me that medicinal glass of wine at the end of a long evening, given me the space to fulminate until it got out of my system, and provided an anchor of values amid competing thoughts. I am blessed to have such a life partner. I have thoroughly enjoyed my time on the board. I have enjoyed the time I've spent with my fellow board members, all of them, which, when you think about it, is pretty amazing. We throw seven people together in a fairly random fashion and ask them to divine the intent, thoughts, and aspirations of a diverse public instead of stakeholders. We ask them to choose solutions to insoluble problems, make impossible decisions, all under bearing degrees of uncertainty. I still look up to compatriots past, Rob Felder, Tom Kinsock, Jackie Dixon, Francis Ortiz Chavez, and Michael Douglas. I suspect I will miss this, but I'll get over it. Thank you.
You know, he had to do it, that last Joe-ism.
Trustee Hurtado. I first met him shortly after being elected to the board. We had agreed to have coffee at Starbucks. I had reached out to me with several of the trustees prior to officially joining the board, but was, Jose was the first one I met with. I was a newly-elected, very eager member, and Jose was the elder statesman of the board. He gave me some solid advice that day about appreciating the perspective of the past and understanding how we got to where we were. I came in seeing a host of problems all in need of fixing, but Jose opened my eyes to how what I saw as problems were actually massive improvements over where things had been previously. While we certainly had our fair share of disagreements, we were always able to work together to do the business of the district. We never let our policy disagreements affect our personal relationship during our time on the board. Jose served as president for the first year of my tenure on the board and demonstrated great leadership. He ran a tight meeting and provided important perspective around issues that I was passionate about. I always appreciated his perspective on issues, even when we disagreed, because he would often expand my understanding of the matter.
Trustee Hurtado, and then trustee Martin.
American Canyon has a high school. The new memorial stadium is a gem. Early on, we changed the default graduation requirements A through G so that all of our students would be getting advice that would get them to college. And that was quite a battle, believe me. We've changed mascots in some of the schools. And just, just for our information. Fresno High School, their board just voted to change their mascot. And the National Congress of Native Americans made the mascot issue foremost in their national meeting. So I can't say that we were ahead of the wave. We were probably halfway through the wave. One of the biggest changes was that Joe Shunk changed positions from out here to back there. A change that I welcomed very much. And we selected Dr. Messetti to be our superintendent, which I think was a major step forward for the district. I have served also, piggybacking on Mr. Shunk's statement, have served with some outstanding student people whose names deserve to be heard one more time in the boardroom. Dr. John Glaser, the first superintendent I've served with. Michael Douglas, who served before Mr. Shunk as the American Canyon representative. Tom Kinsack, who... Tom and my wife plotted at a Hispanic Network recognition dinner when my tío Aurelio Hurtado received a lifetime achievement award. I was enjoying the food, and back then I could drink, so I had a glass of wine. And by the end of the dinner, my wife informed me that I was running for the school board. How did that happen?
Oh, my.
A happy occurrence. One of the people that I respect the most, Alan Murray, who spent 56 years in education, certainly a role model. Jackie Dixon. Francis Ortiz Chavez. Linda La Forge. Rob Felder. Jacqueline Chilton. Patrick Sweeney. And Don Evans. Funny story about Alan Murray, Jackie Dixon, and Linda La Forge. They invited me to lunch soon after the election, my election to the board. I asked them if there was a problem before of us meeting, because that constituted a forum. And their response was, no, because you haven't been sworn in yet. Wrong. And we were discussing charter schools. So anyway, don't... We can erect the statute of limitation. That's why I can tell the story now. But there was a price to pay for my being on the school board. Kohler, and you can, the resemblance is amazing. He is six feet three. Buck fifty. I missed almost all of his high school concerts because the concerts were on Thursdays. Nancy had to take over all of our business with the schools because our well-behaved son, every once in a while, ended up in the principal's office. And so instead of making... Instead of making a whole big deal, because when I went, the principal was there, the vice principal was there, the counselor was there, the teacher was there. Nancy took over, so from second grade on, Mom took care of the boy. I'll have you know, though, I'm proud of my son. He holds the record at New Tech High School for tardies in the morning. Because he would drive to school and fall asleep in his car. So technically, he was at school. The only time my son was ever late was when he was born. He was two weeks early. That was it. After that, it was over. And Friday nights after board meetings, when I'd be talked and peopled out, Nancy figured out that that was probably not a good time to go out and see friends because I would not, at that point, I would hate people. I think those are my exact words. If I had advice to give to the current board and the oncoming board members, first of all, it's the economy, stupid. Not for you, you come to call me. People are going to criticize you for some of the decisions you make. And we're going to hear more about that today. For incoming board members, I would say it's about the students. It's about the families. It's not about ideology. The irony of the new election is that the very people who admonished us for not having a representative board have now put someone who doesn't represent our community on this board. I will be keeping close watch on that. I appreciate David's response. We don't always agree. In fact, I think we may be the most polar opposite in our political views on the board. But we understand that the priority on this board is not our own ideology. It's not our own politics. It's what serves our students. I will continue to support the board in furthering the futures of our students. You are now accountable for what you say. That was misquoted in American Canyon by an elected official. You are now accountable for what you say, both in your capacity as an elected official and unfortunately, in your capacity as a private citizen. So people will hold you to what you say. That's what I admired so much about Mr. Shunk, in that when he said something, made a statement in our board meetings, it was so well researched that he held himself accountable and the board to what he said. Again, to incoming members of the board, it is easier to campaign than it is to govern. You can promise the world, but here you have to deliver what you promise. Remember, when people agree with you, it's called transparency. When they don't agree with you, they call it an agenda. You just be true to your values and follow the mission of the district. It is your collective responsibility to help one another, be informed, prepared, and accountable. Help each other learn the areas where your members may need mentoring. Help mentor community members to consider running for the board regardless of their personal views. It has been an honor and a privilege to have served this board. People have asked me what I'm going to do now that I've retired, you know, all the time I have. And I'll quote my tío Aurelio one more time. For any of you who don't know, Aurelio Hurtado is, his portrait is on the historical mural on First Street. He's a handsome guy that looks like me. In the banquet where my wife plotted with Mr. Kinsack, my uncle was asked, "When will you retire?" And my uncle's response was, "When the last child in Napa Valley no longer needs my help, that's when I'll retire." I may get a T-shirt that says, "What would Aurelio do?"
I'm going to have some aid. I got you.
I get that tattooed. Thank you. Nancy? My wife, who encouraged me and supported me throughout these 16 years, although it interfered with our vacations. But now, she told me that she has planned the first post-board vacation without regard to when meetings were. So we're in Fat City. My oldest daughter, Tammy, who showed me that no matter what the world throws at you, you can come through it with a smile and begin your life again. I love you, Tammy. Joshua, my oldest son, who is a high school math teacher in the highest performing math high school in Dallas, Texas, showed me that brilliance and creativity can inhabit the same brain. And boy, that brain is amazing. Rebecca, my fierce warrior. When we were talking about the mascot and we made a strategic decision to delay the retirement of the mascot, Rebecca reminded me that it's never the wrong time to do the right thing. Thank you, sweetheart. And Kohler, again, my twin. You never cease to surprise me and make... My son is learning how to fly. It's probably because he knows I'm deathly afraid of flying in small planes and he's going to... So he's flying, he's working, and he's going to school in San Diego. He's made a life for himself. Thank you all for your support. And Reed, thank you for joining our family. You didn't know what you were getting into because we lied to you for a bit, but then we got you. Again, it's been an honor and a privilege. Thank you.
I did it for power words individually. I did it as a group, and that way I can only cry once, right? But I have to say something out loud to you, Jose, and that is, I was never prepared for us to storm off of the auditorium stage when we were talking about mascot. And both me and Elba were casually having a conversation, and it almost felt kind of like Chaplin moment, like someone pulling us offstage, like, what are you doing? So nobody would have prepped me for any, the leadership that you brought to the table during the mascot issues. And I mean, that's one of the biggest kind of like uh-ohs that we had done, and we had no idea that it was an uh-oh. But I thank you for that moment, though, because it was fierce leadership during that time. We had no idea what the heck was going on, and however, we were actually going to get through that. But I think with both Joe and your help, we were able to navigate through absolutely everything that came our way. I kept writing the list and list and list of things. I'm like, mascot's pivoting 360. We have a doctora Latina. We have remote learning, which I remember even Rosana mentioning to us one time, like, oh, wouldn't it be a great idea? We promote remote learning. And everything she said, it was like a doomsday that happened to our school district. And it came as a positive notion, and then it ended up being a doomsday kind of deal. And I know it wasn't intentional, but I had to bring out those highlighted items because we were trying to look for attraction for our district to have other children come to our district to go to school. So with that said, my story was surrounded by coffee. It started with coffee. I start my mornings with coffee. I start with my bestie, Throw Ideas, Ugo. Thank you for joining me. First thing in the morning, coffee with Craig in the morning as well. And I started conversations with coffee with the board. And that was with, it first started off with a conversation with Francis Ortiz Chavez. And it was really funny that the conversation she had was like, you know, have you ever thought about it? And I'm like, are you like hunting, headhunting for your position? And I never thought I would run for office and much less be voted by the majority between Yonville, American Canyon, and Elba. Sorry. So during that time, I thanked everyone publicly through the Napa Register. And I think everybody read that. My predecessors, Rob Felder and Tom Kinsack, they were great. They even came back and said, hey, we got a clipping of your thank you from the register, which was really awesome. I'm like, I don't think anybody read the register, but I am deathly wrong, especially after serving on this board, that the register is much alive. Because I had no official platform to do so then, today I do have the platform. And I wanted to thank the 2,402 voters that voted for me. And more so, everyone that came out to vote, especially on that day, because it was so important. For some, you saw my work, my style of governance. Some even call me the police. I know who you are. And what I think I leave behind is that, you know, you guys are still going to be held to the highest standard of governance. This doesn't end here. I'm still fighting for full funding for our schools. You guys will still be hearing me, the equitable access for education, kind of like how Jose said. I'm going to be really vigilant about things. It's still my area. It's still where I live. I still live in an unrepresented area, the Latinos that couldn't vote. And so that is a major point of why it's so important that major representation needs to go on in my district. So alongside the way that I'd be fighting, I've decided to join forces with California School Board Association, which we bring together governance boards, administrators from districts and county offices of education to advocate for effective policies that advance the education and well-being of the state's more than 6 million schoolchildren. It is a membership-driven association, but the majority of all districts of California pertain to it. CSBA provides policy, resources, training to members, we've trained here, and represents the statewide interests of public education through legal, political, legislative, community, and media advocacy. When I sat down to write a few words, the only thing that kept flying through my mind is, how do I sum up these extraordinary people? The work ethic on an unimaginable level, problem solvers, behind-the-scenes kind of work, you know what I'm talking about? Being at the table, sitting at the table, flipping the table, and getting things kind of done. You know, you guys are my kind of folks. My predecessors, Rob Felder, Tom Kinsack, Jose, and Joe Shunk. When I'd look across the table during closed session, the only thing I could remember, I almost felt like a meme, you know, just sitting there, my big old puppy eyes, and it's like, with exclamations coming out of my head, "Help! I don't know what I'm doing." But you guys did help patiently. I know with Jose, it was like, man, this guy's fierce. I'm so scared of him. I remember the first comment you said went something like, well, you have to remind them who we are. We're the trustees of NVUSD. And then Joe was always the calm reasoning behind it. So it doesn't matter that every single situation, you flip the coin so many which ways, made you think. And I would come, I had come to, you know, with probably something I was super angry about and walk away with, what the heck am I going to do now? He gave me about 20 different problem-solving, you know, things I can do with this at this point. So I do appreciate your different perspective on things. People I met along the way, Georgina Placencia Martinez, Patrick Sweeney, Elba González Mares, Robin Jankowicz, Cindy Water, we cannot forget our old friend Fran, and then David Gracia, and Vera Morales, and the entire executive team. I ask you all to stay focused on what we have all worked on collectively. And keep our children's future in mind. Making positive change in education. And where do I begin with all the rewards? You guys have all seen them. They are huge. Our parents, our constituents, our general public may or may not know how or why we make certain changes. The perception of many is that we're doing everything bad. But that can be taken many ways. How much do we really know of our elected officials and what they do? Do they understand the hierarchy of our district and who's really in charge? Do they understand how awesome Rosana Messetti's job is? Depends who you ask for a definition of awesome to. How familiar are you with the industry, salaries? Do you understand the totality of being in charge of your child's education? Our teachers' well-being, the balance of well-being of our employees, keeping the lights on, paying the bills, following so many rules, policies, ed code, eating healthy, reading, answering emails, be the best we can be, smile, be kind, and repeat. I humbly came and sat here. At times, I was hated. Gosh, I know I was hated. At times, not being the wonderful being that I am, but I will say that while I sat here, it was fair. I listened, I urged, I pushed, and at times, we demanded. This wouldn't have been possible without my trustee team. We have educated each other about each other, shared opinions openly. This was definitely created friendship unlike any. Para nuestras familias que tienen la esperanza de que yo siguiera siendo su representación, lo seguiré, lo seguiré haciendo en el mismo trabajo para la educación, para el futuro de nuestros hijos. Me dio mucho gusto ser parte, parte de la mesa directiva del distrito unificado del Valle de Napa. Su servidora no se despide sino un hasta luego. Los dejo en buenas manos con Elba González Mares, la doctora Rosanna Misetti, Vera Morales, Viviana Loera, y todas esas personas que ayudan a nuestro distrito, ayudarles a todos ustedes de habla español. Lo que, lo que sí les pido de forma muy sincera es que sean parte de sus escuelas, de sus mesas directivas, ser parte de las decisiones del futuro de nuestros hijos, de sus maestros, y de todos los empleados que necesitan de nuestra representación. Adelante. I also have to take time to thank my sweet boys for being, for dealing with me. JJ and Demetri Martin, all product of NVSD and graduated here. Had to go through some tough times on those cell phone policies, you know what I'm talking about. I had really hard times. I couldn't go to sleep because I didn't know if I was going to get murdered or not for cell phone policy. And my entire family, the Martin Regalado Vidal family, and like I said, one of my best friends, adopted from Durango, Ugo, on Piveros, never dies. Craig, my love, my rock, my center, and Bella, my future stepdaughter. This is not a goodbye, but I'll see you later. It's been my pleasure to serve you all, to work alongside you as a trustee, past secretary, past vice president, and now presidency. I'm going to take two because you left me on purpose. But I do thank you, Jose, because if you hadn't left, it wouldn't have prepped me for this year, which was chaos. My last words to you are, make this count. This is not a show of who wins or loses. This isn't a race amongst trustees or employees. You may not see it now, but the kids that grow through your failed or successful leadership are watching, feeling, and waiting. I'm sure Jose and Joe know exactly what I'm talking about. And to my familia that's watching, and my sincere condolences are up to the family that I had missed today's viewing. Thank you.
I just, I wanted to offer any of the families in the Zoom room, if anyone wants to make any comments. Do you want me to ask Manny?
No.
We can do that. But yeah, well, I guess they're family, so they can.
Family cohorts alone.
Family cohorts alone, not as a broad group, yeah. Would you like that? So, Veda, can I get some help with a photo, with photos? So should we start with trustee Adonis family?
Oh, that is funny. Isn't Kohler going to be late? I'm smiling. Yes. Oh my goodness. Shunk. I know they're... The masks just kill me. He looks, me, Joe's eyes and her and his dad's eyes are the same. Oh, he is, I love him. God, I love him. Okay, you are such a good fiance.
Hi fiance.
Yeah. Oh, how cute she is. Well, I'm emotionally exhausted. I'm just going to put it out.
Okay. So, Mr. Ruiz, do we have any public comment?
He's asleep.
We do not have any comment at this time.
Sounds good. Okay, we will proceed with our business meeting. Thank you, everyone, for showing up. Thank you. Are you going to say?
Those are kisses, by the way.
Okay, where were we? Okay, so. G1 Board of Education and Student Board Representatives. We will start with student body.
Yes, all right. So the week before Thanksgiving break, I was lucky enough to help facilitate Mr. Peter Hartnik's focus groups. And topic was going into the next phase and asking students from all levels, elementary, middle, and high school. A series of questions of what makes you feel safe at school? What do you think your teachers can do better, et cetera, et cetera? And those were really successful. The elementary school ones impressed me the most. I didn't really know what to expect, but it was, it was nice to hear from a younger audience of what is going on at schools and realizing that it's not much different than the high school level. Middle school, we only had a few students show up, but of course they gave as, as much as they could and it was really nice hearing back from them. Majority had a lot of positive things to say and of course, there could always be improvements, but we did a lot of fist to fives and we got fours and fives for almost everybody, which was nice. This past week, December 3rd and 4th, I attended the CSBA conference. I attended the climate change task force session, COVID-19 mental health session, show me the money session, and governance with an equity lens. That's all for me.
I went to the high school virtually, the high school breakfast with Napa Valley College. The purpose of that event is to develop and strengthen relationships between NBC staff and counselors and the high school districts in their service area. And the focus of the breakfast was to share the innovative developments that are occurring at Napa Valley College. I listened to the virtual state of the district, which is an update on our district goals and the monumental amount of work that has been accomplished. I would encourage everybody to please take the time to visit the website and listen. It is worth your time. You will get a deep understanding of what we do, why we do it, and how much has been done. The board attended the CSBA annual education conference. We went to general sessions. David and I virtually met with the people from Ares on the trade show floor, which actually was really helpful. I went to Fed 2020 programs budget and the election, understanding your district budget, an incredible session on accurate and equitable grading system wide, which was the best session I attended, and then engage, inform, communicate, and transform. Also had a facilities and technology committee this week and a finance committee meeting this week.
I attended also the CSBA conference, several workshops. One of them was the president workshop. Really good round of breakout groups with other trustees, again reminding us, reminding me of the size of our district and the issues that our district faces and how they compare to theirs and a lot of similarities as it comes to declining enrollment and, and other things. A wonderful quote that I'll say for another meeting, it's been a long night, but something that just keeps, it grounded me as to the work ahead of us. And I think that's all for my report. Thank you.
Cindy?
I went to the state of the district meeting.
... I was changed. Really interested in the presentation from the trustee from the unified. And I went to the, went to the meeting about finance and politics and what to expect next year. And gee, then on, after that meeting, on the fourth, I went to our local S4 CA Students for Climate Action meeting, and I got a COVID test negative. And I was glad to see the Arts Council on, of Napa Valley posted their students of the month, five from the Napa Valley Unified School District, Napa High, New Tech, Napa High, American Canyon High School, and Silverado. And I guess I'd like to close and say that, you know, we lost a former teacher this week, last week, Paige, Paige Dearden died and I taught one of her children, both of them went to Napa High, and she was retired from Vichy School, helped a lot of kids, was a lot of fun. And as a parent, I always appreciated her insights about, you know, the school district. A wonderful, a long time employee of our district. A wonderful person and wonderful family, always, you know, very pro the school. So, you know, it's kind of sad and I'm glad to see all of you all in person.
I missed our last author event, but I did make the Napa High ELAC meeting. So that's sort of how I've finished up this one.
I attended the virtual state of the district meeting, which was, I texted, texted Dr. Misetti that she was a superstar. I attended the Napa Valley College non-breakfast breakfast, counselor's breakfast. My cousin was very generous to me at that meeting. And the finance, which will be covered later, and I attended the CAC meeting, which I will report out later. Oh, and I, sorry, lots of emails. Lots of emails.
So in November, I attended the Duarte training to learn about advanced presentation techniques, which were being passed on to our employees. I attended the curriculum meeting and the state of the district. Also, on the 30th of November and then December 3rd and 4th, I attended the CSBA training to help improve my abilities as a board member. On the 2nd of December, I attended the presentation on grading with equity. And then on the 8th, the facilities and technology meeting. And then also in the evening of the 8th, the author event. And then on the 9th, I attended the ELAC meeting at Silverado Middle School.
Thank you. We'll move to board representative reports. G2A Curriculum and Student Support Committee.
Okay, well, I'll report out and if I leave anything out, you'll hop in and correct me. I've got about 20 pages of notes here, but let's, seriously, I mean, we went half an hour over time. It was what I call very dense. Okay, Sarah Knox spoke, spoke about MTSS, our intervention person, multi-tiered system of support. Many students are experiencing trauma, existential and economic. We need to make sure our support system is robust and coherent and aligned with our strategic plan. Ultimately, we want one year's growth for one year's instruction. We need to make sure students are getting what they need. We are looking at the situation from academic behavior and emotional measures. We piloted, piloted an assessment tool in a couple of schools. Want finally, the same plan of action at all schools. And she discussed how we manage tiers one, two, and three. In the past, we did not have consistent protocols. Now we will because we're going to have data systems assessments to back us up. And then looking at the big picture, if you get updates, you will see progress. My question here is maybe more frequent updates? Maybe we should be having more often, more, instead of more frequent, what do you call them, you know, grades? Have them go out more often, maybe once a month. I only say that because I'm a retired teacher. They convened an advisory team. There's lots of training attached to this and the board can expect a report at the end of the year as to how we are doing. We've had parent and student focus groups. And thanks to Carla for all your work there. You know, your name came up. So we also discussed at length grading policy, popularly known as the third rail or the last autonomy teachers have. We have grading, but no grading system. We do have some software. And all of us went to a more detailed meeting last Wednesday with dozens of teachers where we explored this in much greater detail. And some, right now, we have a lot of Ds and Fs. Oddly, we had also nearly the same amount last year at this time, but because of the pandemic, it's more difficult for students to prepare their grades. And we do have work to do, building teacher and parent understanding of the elementary report cards. There was a big discussion about the elementary report cards, making better use of parent teacher conferences. It needs to be noted that grading for equity does not mean just pass everyone. This needs to be emphasized. We need to provide a middle ground and recognize that COVID has had a huge impact on our students. Grades should report a student's academic performance, not behavior. This is not lowering standards, but is, it's making the standards clearer. And one thing that interested me but was not explained is that this is supposed to eliminate grade inflation, you know, that this is going to make grades fairer all around. And so I'm looking forward to reading this book and will lend it to anyone who wants it when I'm done. And this is, this is really just a very, very big topic and we'll be hearing more about it. And I have to say that the committee meeting I attended, the teachers seemed to be pretty, pretty, not negative about it at all. They were, we had breakout sessions and I was listening to people's conversations about, you know, their grading and it was... you know, their grading, and it was interesting. We also discussed the math curriculum, and we've, we've had, you know, presentations about it. We want to make sure we have the right courses in place, best curriculum. We need, we recognize we need the professional development. And as you know, this is, this is the big project that we embarked on. We want to make sure students are in the right courses for college career, the ones that are relevant to their futures, with supplemental interventions when necessary. Peter says that, you know, we need to be able to, Peter Hartnack, said that we need to be able to identify precisely where students struggle. We want them to, we want to be able to move in and remediate where they're having problems, not just have them fail the class and start all over again. And would anyone else like to add to that? Did I leave anything out? Was I? Okay, great.
We are continuing our laptop deployment. We have been distributing at the site level, but we will be moving deployment to the district office. The process has been slowed due to the increased dependency on computers during our hybrid learning model. We hope to utilize winter break for continued distribution, have online scheduling available, and are looking to have about an 80% completion rate by year end. Radio project, working at each site, and we are currently focused on operational and emergency standards with an expectation to be completed in January. We are working on some of the technology needs for the new Napa Junction, for example, switches and wireless access points. We will have some financial savings as we utilize some assets from the original site. The FIT update, which is the Facility Inspection Tool. This is an objective visual tool, a visual inspection, to determine if facilities are considered a clean, safe, and functional space for our students to learn. It has had an additional benefit in that it assists in helping us apply for state funding. There are about 15 building system areas and eight building categories. The categories have a numeric weight and a percentage weight. This allows us to prioritize work orders and address the most pressing needs. Report uses evaluation detail for each category, which includes a symbol, a point value, a ranking, and a description. There are four ranking categories, exemplary, good, fair, and poor. And Mr. Pearson and his team have done exceptional work in improving our scores. At this very moment in time, every school has a site rating of 90%. There's a spreadsheet where there is one dip below 90%, but that has been rectified. So at this moment, we have a site rating of 90% or higher and a good or exemplary rating associated with each one. So very well done, Mr. P and team. We continue to reflect on best practice in addressing our visual inspections with consistent follow-up on work orders, routine and improved upkeep, and continued future inspections. After spring inspections follow up through the fall, we will submit FIT assessment for the 2021-22 CARC. We are concurrently conducting a modernization plan. We are reviewing 23 of our 28 sites. The five not being currently reviewed are considered new sites. This is an important step in understanding the condition of our sites and giving us the necessary information to rank and prioritize. It is a roadmap for deferred maintenance, capital improvements, and keeps us in line for matching funds from the state. We have assessment teams for site visitations. We will address things like electrical, mechanical, and portable assessment, as well as technology for current status, goals, and replacement plans. And with the gathered information, we will draft deliverables. Educational parity, cost, and projected dates will be considered. Budgeting will apply escalation as appropriate when needed, and all necessary components of the MPP, the Modernization Program Plan, will be completed, determinations will be made, summaries created, and findings will be reviewed in January, January at our board study session. That concludes my report until we go to finance, which is next.
Thank you. G2C Finance Committee?
Sorry, guys. We were fortunate to have the Finance Committee scheduled before the presentation of the first interim report. This allowed committee members to ask questions and review the data. Mr. Monkwalla presented the information that will be seen this evening in addition to addressing questions that we had regarding specific issues. It will be duplicative if I give a detailed overview of the meeting as it was the presentation. I will touch upon the subject matter covered, and Mr. Monkwalla will fill in all the blanks during the first interim presentation. We discussed the economic impact of COVID as it pertained to state revenues and the impact on school funding. Rob spoke about policy decisions that led to the difference between the anticipated depression in March and the reality of a current recession. He touched upon the unprecedented loosening of the monetary supply, Fed rates, and the impact of short-term borrowing. Treasury rates, as they are the benchmark of interest rates, and mortgage prices are priced at the spread on, at a spread above Treasury. So we touched on the real estate market. Discussion always also centered on market segments that have rebounded and sectors that will be severely impacted or will vanish with the onset of change due to the pandemic and a needs shift. We moved to dialogue regarding the district with focus on cash reserves, cash flow, and the financial implications of declining enrollment. We finished with revenue and expenditure assumptions, multi-year projections, and the challenges ahead. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Robyn. G2D Policy Committee? G2E Special Education Community Advisory Committee?
We met on the 16th of November. There were eight of us, which was a topic of discussion for priorities since we need a lot more parent participation in the CAC. And again, that was one of the priorities. There is a secondary transition committee to help students 16 to 22 decide pathways, whether it's higher education or work transition. There should be a presentation ready for the next CAC meeting, so it'll be very informative for the new representative. They talked about mental, mental health partnerships with dentists, teen concept, and the SULPA teaming up for services and input. That presentation should be ready in February. Let's see. Terry Lynn was able to brag on the fact that we were up and running with students in person, providing services. So we're, again, ahead of the wave. And like I said, the top priority for this committee is communication with parents in order to, to get more participation. We identified probably the single biggest problem, and that's that this committee meets at 12 noon. So a lot of parents can't make even, even virtual meetings. So we're sending out a survey to see if there's a better, and there is, it has to be a better time. So hopefully, by the next meeting, they'll have a better time and a larger commitment of parents.
G2F City of American Canyon Liaison Representatives? G2G City of Napoli Liaison Representatives? G2H Town of Youngville Liaison Representatives?
We have not met.
And G3 Superintendent and Executive Staff?
May I just say something before we go to that? It's important to recognize the fact that the past mayor of Napa and the current mayor of Napa both served on the school board. So we should have some.
Thank you. I'll keep my comments, I'm trying to be brief here. I am focused on three topics tonight that I'd like to report on. I want to continue to thank the community for their partnership, patience, and understanding as the Napa Valley Unified School District continues to navigate school operations during the pandemic. As many of you know, NVUSD continues to be one of the few Greater Bay Area districts open for hybrid in-person instruction, TK through 12th grade, even during the second surge of the coronavirus. There's less than 100 districts open for in-person instruction K-12 across the state of California. I want to recognize the Napa Valley Unified School District staff, the teachers, the principals, the assistant principals, district administrators, and all of our support staff, from clerical to the IT team, to the custodians, to all of food services, transportation, maintenance, and operations, and anyone I may have forgotten. This school district is working so hard comparatively and diligently on behalf of students. It's beyond impressive, and I am just incredibly proud. The NVUSD workforce has proven that we put students first. We continue to manage our response to COVID-19, especially during the surge, with health and safety as a top priority. But we do remain steadfast in our belief as an organization that if schools are opened with safety top of mind, school campuses can open for students and families who want in-person instruction, while we continue to implement our distance learning program for those students and families who want the ongoing virtual option. As part of Goal Three of our strategic plan, I've spent the last couple of weeks working on the initiative, taking a stand for California public schools, particularly for Napa Valley Unified School Districts and all school districts in California that did reach the milestone of opening their campuses for in-person instruction. I'm using various county and statewide platforms to ensure that our experience is well-known as the Bay Area continues to have over a million students at home in all distance learning. Goal number five, we work on equity-centered leadership and being an inclusive organizational culture. And under that goal tonight, I'd like to let the community and our board members know that we are very excited about having formally launched our partnership with partner, I'm sorry, with Promise 54, the partner that will be facilitating the development of our multi-year Equity Action Plan that will focus on issues related to diversity, equity, and inclusion in the Napa Valley Unified School District. Earlier this week, all employees are currently being surveyed through two tools, the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Staff Experience Survey and a Talent Ready Diagnostic Survey. Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings and myself are now working on the formation of a small steering committee that will help our organization evaluate the data from these two survey tools. And this data will help shape the Equity Action Plan that we look forward to sharing with the board and the community later this spring. So stay tuned. I'm goal number three around community engagement, and also coupled and paired with goal number five, Equity-Centered Leadership and Inclusive Organizational Culture. I'd like to lastly report out a big thank you to Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings and Mr. Matt Manning for their hard work these last couple of months in establishing a formal, compliant District English Learner Advisory Committee. I've attended the last two meetings, and it's been inspiring to hear directly from our English learner, Latinx, Spanish-speaking parents about what they view as the strengths and areas of improvement of the English learner student experience in NVUSD. But it's been even more inspiring to have strong attendance and representation from the majority of our schools at all three levels, elementary, middle, and high. And in the last meeting, observe a handful of our D-LAC representatives rise for a leadership opportunity and get nominated for the officer positions of the D-LAC Board, the Advisory Board. I know Mr. Manning right now is working through the election process, and we look forward to introducing the formerly elected D-LAC officers to the Board of Education and the community very soon. And lastly, I do want to wish the NVUSD community a very joyful, happy winter break. I'm looking forward to the new year because 2020 has been a real handful. I just want to remind, I just want to remind our staff, students, and families, everything we do over the winter break outside of school can impact our school experience upon return from the break on January 11. So I ask you, please be safe, stay well, enjoy the break, but enjoy it with safety and health at the forefront. And with that, I'm going to toss to my Assistant Superintendents who will report on their respective divisions. We'll start with Assistant Superintendent Rob Mangwalla, who oversees Business Services.
Thank you very much. I will be providing a substantial update during my first interim presentation, so I am going to pass on any additional information tonight.
Great, thank you. Assistant Superintendent Dana Page, who oversees Human Resources.
Thank you. Good evening, President.
Good evening, President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Masetti, and community. COVID testing is now happening conveniently at our school campuses. We've had successful onsite testing events at River School, Northwood, American Canyon High School, and Napa High scheduled next week. Thank you to all the staff who helped check in employees, handed out test kits, guided testers, and wiped tables. I want to give a shout out to Gina DeLuca for her leadership in bringing a new provider of testing, Curative, onboard and figuring out the logistics. After we finish this first round of testing, we will be repeating testing and increasing the frequency to once per month to follow the guidance from Public Health. Also, last week, I had the opportunity to connect with some of our teacher interns and their mentors. These amazing teacher interns are taking on the responsibilities of teaching their class and completing credential programs simultaneously, most often in our very hard-to-fill and challenging positions. They shared what was working well and what other support we could provide as a district. Overwhelmingly, they complimented their mentors and the guidance they get, they get from them. So I would like to publicly thank these seasoned veteran teachers who are sharing their time and expertise with our interns. So I'm just going to read a few names. Dana Hall, Michelle Hugo, Anne Gardner, Teresa Alcantara, Tracy Cavidol, Maggie Solario, Jill Suazo, Nancy Luciere, Abby Dev, Jen Can, Holly Johnson, Teri Gasner, and Sally Sabaga. Also, from HR, I want to acknowledge Dominique Marcus, our credential analyst, who is instrumental in shepherding our interns through all of the hoops that the California Teaching Credential puts in, Board puts in front of them. Our interns were also very grateful for her help. And next, I'd like to remind parents and staff about the work of our calendar committee and how they can participate. Every year, Napa Valley Unified School District adopts the student calendar for the following school year, designating when school will begin in the fall and finish in the spring, including school holidays and breaks. This year, Committee of Teachers, Staff, Students, Parents, and Community Members is working to develop a three-year calendar for the 21, 22, 22, 23, and 23, 24 school years. The committee wants to incorporate as much input as possible into the development of the draft proposal, which will be reviewed and adopted by the Board of Education, hopefully in January or early February. The committee invites all families and staff to provide input through an electronic survey, which went out through Parent Square and the employee newsletter. And we'll send reminders again so we can get plenty of input. Finally, I too would like to say a brief farewell to Trustees Martin Hurtado and Shank. Simply put, it's been a pleasure working with you, and I will miss your calm manner, your eloquence, your thoughtful leadership and wisdom. Please stay in touch and grace us with your significant presence from time to time. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings, who oversees the Instructional Services Division.
Good evening, President Martin, Trustees, Student Representative Munganya, and Dr. Masetti. As we complete the sixth week, sixth week of in-person learning, safety remains our focus. We are continuing to find that the COVID-positive case rates among our virtual students outpaces those of our in-person students. Currently, we have 23 virtual students who have tested COVID-positive and eight in-person students who have tested COVID-positive over the last week or so. The COVID-positive in-person students, along with seven class cohorts, are currently home quarantining. Mike Mansway, the wonderful Director of Student Services, reported that no virus transmission has occurred in an NVUSD site. This is an indication that the protocols we have in place are effective. Also, NVUSD and Napa County Public Health have developed a cooperative and collaborative partnership, which has enabled us to respond quickly to positive cases in our district and significantly reduce the risk of transmission. Napa County Public Health has been instrumental in our ability to remain open for in-person learning. I also want to give a special appreciation to our certificated nurses and health technicians who have worked tirelessly to make sure that we do the appropriate contact tracing and follow up with all possible COVID-positive cases. The Instructional Services Division continues our work to create alignment and coherence across our schools even during the times of COVID. All of our secondary site leaders, department chairs, and PLC leads were introduced to principal, to the principles of effective and equitable grading practices by the Crescendo Education Group. Thank you to Trustee Gracia and Trustee Water for attending this introductory session. All secondary teachers will be trained in January as well as be offered an opportunity to participate in a teacher-action research cohort in the spring. Tonight, we had planned to present data on our secondary students' academic progress. We would like to include the data from the final semester grades at the high school level. And as a result, that presentation has been rescheduled for a future board meeting. level, and as a result, that presentation has been rescheduled for a future board meeting. Our third author night was this past Tuesday. Author and illustrator Juana Martinez Neal shared her thoughtful, authentic voice with our district community. Her book, one of her books, Frybread, is part of the Global Read-Allow Program, and all elementary school sites receive copies of the book to share. Lastly, I'd like to take a moment to also thank Board President Martin, Trustee Shank, and Trustee Hurtado for their years of service. It has been a true pleasure and honor to serve the Napa Valley community under your leadership. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Andrew Jennings. And lastly, we have Mr. Mike Pearson, who oversees operational services.
Thank you, Dr. Masetti. Manny, if you could, as I'm speaking, if you could pull up that presentation I had. Good evening, President Martin, NVSD Board of Education Trustees and members of the NVSD community. Before I begin, I do want to also thank President Martin and Trustee Shank and Hurtado. Each of you has done an exemplary job leading Napa Valley Unified School District, and I'm proud and honored to have been the beneficiary of your expert guidance and wisdom, not only as an employee, but also as a very proud NVSD parent. Thank you, and each of you is going to be greatly missed. Tonight, I'm going to share a couple, decided to do a little presentation here because sometimes the pictures are better. So I wanted to update you on what's now called Evans Auditorium. Manny, if you go to the next slide. So over the Thanksgiving break, we had some work done, and now the district auditorium now is, has the, has the new name of Evans Auditorium. And to the right-hand side is a little plaque honoring Don Evans, as you know, who spent 50 years of his life working in Napa Valley Unified, serving the community, the students, the parents, the staff here in the Napa Valley Unified. And so, and Manny, if you can go to the next slide, too. We had had a naming committee that had started, that made a presentation, I think about a year ago, and that naming committee started in February, doing some work on that, and then ultimately made some recommend, made a recommendation in April that was brought back to the Board of Education. So I want to recognize former Superintendent Dr. David Brown, former Assistant Superintendent Barbara Parr, former Principal of Redwood Middle School and Vinich High School Harold Miller, former Principal, Napa High School Barb Franco, current Director of Transportation, Terry Guzman, and then one of, one of the architects, who's done, who had done several of our buildings here in Napa Valley Unified, Mark Cotroki, who all served on that naming committee. I also want to recognize, I won't go off through all these names, but the individuals listed on the right-hand side of the contributors to the, to Don Evans, to the Evans Auditorium are listed in the right-hand side, and they all either did in-kind with work that, inside the district office, or also donated money for that. So this was at no expense to the school district. So thank you to all of these businesses for your dedication and your, and honoring Don Evans. We greatly appreciate that. All right, Manny, if you go to the next slide. I wanted to provide the board with a quick update on athletics, if you'll go to the next slide. As you know, we're now back in the purple tier, and so we have to use the, we have always used the California Department of Public Health, the interim guidance for youth sports. So what does that mean? If you'll go to the next slide, Manny. What that means is that for the current status of high school athletics, individual coaching is, it has, conditioning is happening in pods. The focus is on skill development. There is use of equipment being allowed with frequent cleaning, and there are four sports that are out there right now still in the, in the individual skill development, or football, or polo, cross-country, and volleyball. Next slide, please. The California Interscholaric Federation, or what we call CIF, and the California Department of Public Health, had formed a committee with members from both organizations to help provide guidance with, on you, on, for youth and high school sports. They were originally going to come out with a, some sort of guidance, updated guidance in the week of November 9th, but that was pushed back due to 42 counties being put into the purple tier. And then on December, and with, in between that time and now, well, December 1st, there had been very little information that had been released. So on December 1st, if you'll go to the next slide, the CIF released a statement. And in that statement, they said, "Due to the continuing surge in COVID-19 infections, the California Department of Public Health has postponed the issuance of any updated sports guidance." And the CIF does not expect the California Department of Public Health to issue any guidance allowing for schools to return to full practice and competition until after January 1st at the earliest, and thus all full practice and competition starts are officially on hold until the updated guidance is issued. And we, as, as I think you, most of you know, we do compete in the North Coast section. So we don't anticipate having any kind of guidance until after Jan, after January 1st. If you go to the next slide. So, you know, as we wait for guidance for the California Department of Public Health and CIF, we've also been discussing the following questions, and I might say we, it's the athletic directors and the principals, and myself, and Mary Ann Christoperson, who's the principal at Redwood, but she also oversees our athletics. What will transportation look like? So we are considering a few models and what that's going to happen, and this is all provided if we do have the ability to have athletic competitions. We have costs associated with paying referees and officials, and many for these expenses typically come from spectators coming to the events, and so we'll need to worry, need to determine how that's going to happen. If athletic contests are approved, how do we factor in schools in different counties who might be in different tiers? Because we compete with schools primarily in our league is in Sonoma County, but we do sometimes travel to the Contra Costa County, to Solano County, to participate in non-league games as well. So this will be a bit of a challenge if we're in different tiers. And then finally, and most importantly, is making sure that students and coaches are safe at all times is one of the things that we're also making sure has happened on that. So, and if you go to the next slide, so that sort of just kind of sums up, I just wanted to, you know, thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on the athletics and to let you know about that. Later this evening, under Action Abs, will be a very brief presentation updating the Measure H implementation plan before asking the board to take approval for that action. And this concludes our report. Thank you.
Thank you for your reports. We move to approval consent agenda. Background information on these items is provided to the board prior to the meeting. A common motion takes action without discussion on a roll call vote unless discussion or items of items is requested by the board members.
I would like to request discussion on H6D, but otherwise move to approve everything else.
First by Mr. Gracia, a second by Mr. Shank. Roll call, please.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Mares.
Aye.
Trustee Jenkowitz.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Hurtado.
Aye.
Trustee Shank.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Student Board Member Munganya.
Aye.
Thank you.
So I wanted to talk about H6D, just because I think this is the first time since I've been on the school board that I've ever seen the overall price of a contract come in under budget. And so I just wanted to highlight this item for its uniqueness.
I noticed that, too.
Because this never happens.
Should we give it an SO, you know?
Right, right, there you go. Second.
First by Ms. Robin Jenkowitz, and a second by Mr. Gracia. Roll call, please.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Mares.
Aye.
Trustee Jenkowitz.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Hurtado.
Aye.
Trustee Shank. Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Student Board Member Munganya.
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on, I too, Business and Operations, I2A Presentations on 2020, 2021 First Interim Report.
Mr. Reeves, can you bring up the presentation?
Good evening, Board President Martin, Trustees, Dr. Masetti. Thank you for the opportunity to update the board and the community about our financial health through our presentation on our first interim budget update. Next slide, please. As you know, COVID-19 has caused an unprecedented impact on our economy and our economic outlook. Next slide. COVID-19 has caused an economic roller coaster and a great deal of certainty, uncertainty. At one point, economists were pointing to an economic contraction similar to the Great Depression. However, while, while there is, it continues to be a general downturn in our economy, it is not as bad as the Great Depression, and you'll see it looks something closer to the Great Recession that we recently recovered from. Next slide. In terms of job losses, when you look at the economy, in the first two months of COVID-19, you can see that the California economy lost over 2.5 million jobs. Sitting at eight months past the beginning of COVID-19, you can see there's been a dramatic recovery. We're looking at, at job loss in terms of 1.6 million. However, I would like to point out that the job loss is due to COVID-19. Where we're at right now, we're still lower than we were during the Great Recession. So all the recovery that happened after the Great Recession has essentially been erased. Next slide. In terms of impact, the job losses have disproportionate, disproportionately impacted workers. What this slide shows, that if you have a bachelor's degree or higher, you've only been impacted by 3% of the job loss. If you have less than a bachelor's degree, you have been impacted by 97% of the job losses. So there's a great deal of, or I should say, the job losses have disproportionately affected workers. The same is true when you look at race and ethnicity. Even though the Latino population is 38% of our workforce, you can see that the share of the total, total job losses has been 50, 50%, so very, very substantial. Next slide. There has been a substantial economic rebound in the economy, the economy in California. Stock prices have reached historic highs. The technology sector has seen continued growth, and consumer spending is within 10% of pre-pandemic levels. As a result, we're seeing a K-shaped recovery. This means that some sectors of the economy have not only recovered, they're reaching all-time highs. Other sectors of the economy continue to drop and may not recover for a very, very long time. Next slide. Prop 98 guarantees that education receives a minimum of about 40% of state revenues. When the budget was adopted in June, there was an expectation of substantial decline in revenues. However, due to our tax structure, which heavily relies on high-income earners and capital gains from the sale of stocks and other assets, revenues are now anticipated to be higher than projected and to come in, come in pretty close to pre-pandemic levels or even possibly slightly higher. Next slide. Reserves represent the general fend dollars that you don't spend. School districts are required to have a minimum of a 3% reserve. We have a board policy of a 7.5% reserve. However, you can see that our reserves have been as high as 8%, but have dropped close to a minimum of 3%, which is below our board required reserve. We have made very significant cuts to right-size the district. As a result, our reserves are again close to 8%. While this is a significant improvement, the average reserve for a unified school district in California is 16%. Next slide. The largest impact on district revenues is enrollment. The district receives about $10,000 per student. You can see that the enrollment, that our enrollment has significantly declined since 2014, 15. By 2026, 27, we anticipate that our enrollment will drop to around 14,000 students. The district will need to continue to cut costs and reduce the number of facilities that they have to address this, this almost exponential decline in revenues. Next slide. There are numerous financial implications. Declining enrollment will have a negative impact on revenues for the foreseeable future. Enrollment decline has, has increased due to COVID-19 also. In comparison to fall of 2019, enrollment declined by over 450 students. About 200 to 250, 250 students is our normal. Both certificated and classified cuts will need to occur every year as long as we have declining enrollments. We'll need to continue to look closely at our facilities and potentially continue to close schools. We may need to also close both elementary and middle schools. Our reserves are above the board policy of 7.5%, but below, again, below the average for other unified school districts. Next slide. In terms of revenue assumptions that are put into our projection and our first interim, NVUSD will receive fixed average daily attendance, or ADA, based on last year's enrollment. So our revenues for this year and next year are slightly higher than they would be had COVID-19 not occurred. So that's kind of a strange combination of ideas, but because of the hold harmless of ADA, that does keep us at last year's level. However, by the third year, we're looking at a revenue drop of close to $6 million due to the decline in enrollment. Next slide, please. In terms of revenue assumptions, we're assuming that there'll be $350,000 in ongoing certificate management reductions beginning in 2021, 22. There'll be certificate reductions of about $480,000 also beginning next year, along with $200,000 in classified reductions. Stirs and purrs rates for our pensions will continue to increase very substantially in the third year, especially for purrs, where they will go from 20.7% to 26.3. In terms of assumptions, there is an assumption in the budget that we, we are closing a middle school with an estimated savings of $1 million in the first year. We know that running a middle school costs about $2 million. In the first year, you have the ability to recognize almost how, or I should say, slightly more than half of that savings. Some of the other savings has come a little bit over a longer period of time. Also, there is a payback of a loan for, for food services. Food services had borrowed $1.2 million. We are essentially are writing off that loan. It is a conservative thing to do while food services is moving in the right directions in terms of not running deficit. We feel that it, that it's in our best, the best idea would be to pay that back this loan for them because they simply don't have the ability to pay it off in the near future. Additional cuts may also need to occur at second interim. Next slide, please. This represents, this is probably the most important slide. It represents our multi-year projection. School districts are all required to create a three-year projection based on their revenue and expenses. And in this projection, a couple of very important things to point out. One is our reserves. So you can see for the base year, meaning year one, and then in year two, we are sitting above our board required reserve. However, in year three, you can see our revenues drop down to about 3.4% and with some significant deficit spending. While it is important to note, the third year, there's a great deal of uncertainty in the third year, so I do not want to overemphasize it. Really, when you look at the third year, it's, you should be looking at policy decisions that you'll be making this year and next year to make sure that you do not, you have more than the 3% that I'm showing here in the third year. I'm confident that we have the ability to make those decisions, decisions and execute them and continue to build the reserve that we need to build. Next slide. In terms of challenges, COVID-19 continues to cause a great deal of uncertainty. There's a lot of uncertainty in how the state will use some increase in revenues that we anticipate that they'll receive due to additional revenues. Our hope is that the deferrals will be paid off. As you, as you know, California was fully funded. However, we were fully funded with an IOU. We will most likely need to continue to take out an additional tax revenue anticipation note this fiscal year, so a second one for the year due to the deferrals. And then we'll need to continue this process of taking out a tran every year. Typically, we take out a tran for the year beginning on July 1. Typically, we take out a tran for the year beginning on July 1. One of the important things that the business office will be working on is staffing projections for 2021-22. This concludes my presentation unless we have some questions.
I would like to make a comment. Mr. Manguala, how can we cut harder for the 21-22 school year? I'm uncomfortable with the three-year projection that drops us back to 3% reserve. We have very real and significant cost increases, particularly in the labor area. Coming in year three with purrs and stirs contributions takes significant jumps. If that weren't bad enough, the ADA money will significantly decline as two years of declining enrollment will finally catch up with us after the ADA was largely frozen for budget years one and two. I would like to see us cut harder at second interim to save more money and increase the savings in year two so that cuts will not have to be quite as drastic in year three to avoid dropping to the bare minimum 3% reserve in the third year. If we can get to a point where the projected savings in year two can go from a mere 200,000 to something closer to 2 million, that would be huge improvement. We must start to operate as the smaller district we are becoming in year two to avoid bigger problems in year three. It is not unusual for school districts to have a reserve of 16%. So if we increase our reserve further, that will only help us by decreasing our need to rely on tran borrowing. Further, some of the money that we have in the budget for year one is deferrals, which is really just a future promise to pay, and we don't really have that money in the bank. Which means while the reserves look like 8%, it's not really 8% and is much closer to the 3% if you subtract the money that has been deferred by the state of California. This budget really brings home the need to continue examining operations and the need to consider further painful decisions, including the requirement that we may need to close more schools.
Thank you, Trustee Gracia.
I have a comment as well. There are areas of concern. Ed code requires that the board certifies at least twice a year that we can meet our financial obligations. That is a big deal and for the remainder of this fiscal year and two subsequent years. In order for us to meet our obligations, as you just heard, we have to include assumed cuts, including the closure of a middle school. Our reserves are above the required 3% as Rob stated and above the board mandate currently of 7.5%. And as Rob said, most districts hover around 16%, but the reserve percentage is artificially inflated due to deferrals. We need to address our multi-year projections. Declining enrollment is held artificially stable due to the COVID-induced hold harmless rule for this year and next, which means we will get hit with two years of declining enrollment in year three. We don't control deferral reimbursement. We don't have control over the increase in stirs and purrs contributions. And while we can work diligently to increase enrollment, school districts cannot control birth rates, housing issues, and the impact of a recession. So what do we have control over? We have control over making very hard decisions to cut costs potentially before second interim because for every delay in our decision-making process, we compound the issue. And by not closing a middle school in year one, it will be then a $2 million hit in year two. It's cumulative, it compounds. So a $2 million loss compounds to a $4 million loss to a $6 million loss. We cannot afford to conduct ourselves as if time is on our side. It is not. In light of Mr. Manguala's comments in reviewing first interim, it appears that we need to proactively address cuts for year two, potentially looking at additional school closures, meaning in addition to the assumed middle school closure, to ensure that we aren't operating in a deficit and to align with our projected student population. To me, this is opportunity cost. Opportunity cost is the loss of potential gain from other alternatives when one other alternative is chosen. So if we don't consider strategic cuts, then the opportunity cost is the ability to provide increased support for our students. If we consider additional school closures, it allows us the opportunity to invest in our students, enhance programs, provide additional support in order to continue to transform the most essential part of this district, and that is learning. While it is a difficult process, we have a responsibility to be financial stewards while we are being mindful of student needs. We can borrow from ourselves, we can borrow from government entities. You can determine that a trans is the most appropriate course of action or we can assess our surplus facilities, carrying costs associated with those facilities, consider reconfigurations, and stop stretching our resources unnecessarily thin. The first interim is a call to action. I would ask that we apply all appropriate considerations to try and live within our current means and address that before second interim. We must not forget that budgets really are policy documents. Thank you.
Additional comments, questions?
Well, what can I add to that? Very well said. I don't know, you know, people act as if, there's a lot of sentimental attachment to a school. And you know, I understand that. But I think that there's an opportunity if you can, you know, look at the schools we combined up in the north of town.
The money that we can save by consolidation, and I'm not being dismissive of how difficult this process is. There is an enormous emotional component, and I agree with you, we get deep attachment. But I also know at the end of the day, you have these incredibly astute parents. They can, there is a facility or there's student learning, and they want what is best for their student. The opportunity for achievement, support, whatever those needs are. So if we're strategic, we are investing in our students. And we have excess facilities, we have unbelievably, you know, unbelievable caring costs on those facilities. There needs to be capital improvements, and all of that will be assessed. To me, the one thing we should consistently invest in is our kids.
I agree.
This is an opportunity to do that. It is tough to get there, unbelievably tough to get there. And I am not dismissive of the difficulty of the process. But the end result is what we're supposed to be doing.
Right.
And that is supporting these kids.
And I'm looking forward to the facilities discussion later on this month because it's, you know, really daunting when you realize that we've got almost half, if you add up all of our middle schools, we have almost 50% vacancy.
So on that note, Trustee, so thank you, Mr. Manguala. I want to thank Ms. Kay Vang and the Business Services Team. Just so everyone knows in the background, and this is just to kind of honor the work of the department. They've had to do this also in the context of an ongoing conversion of fiscal management systems, and that is not an easy task. So we converted our fiscal management system. We're operating in a pandemic and, you know, addressing and putting very transparently what the fiscal challenges are. So that's not easy work. So I want to thank our Executive Director Kay Vang, the Business Services Team, under the direction and leadership of Rob Manguala as our Chief Business Official for a very thorough first interim that I think provides the board and the public an accurate picture of our current financial position and what we need to do in order to continue to invest in our students over the course of the next few years. On that note, we were obviously talking a lot about the assumption of potential further closure and consolidation. I think in the tenure of our retiring trustees to the right, they've been through not one round, but a couple of rounds of school closures. And we did execute on school closures over a year ago. And clearly, we have surfaced, I think, very directly with the community that given the declining enrollment, it's a path that we need to continue to walk. And so in the spirit of that, despite the pause in October during the fires, evacuations, the reopening of school for in-person instruction during the pandemic, we did pause on any decisions that would involve a school closure and/or consolidation. But as promised at that point in time, we talked about erecting a middle school redesign task force to look at the issues relative to facilities, enrollment trends, long-term, short-term facilities planning, capital improvement costs, of course, student programming, and the financial impacts of decisions or not making a decision is also a decision. So the financial impacts of all those things. And we're really excited. We've started with our principals. We have an interest form out to teachers for the positions of teachers on that task force. We also have an interest form that went out today to parents at the middle school level and our two immersion schools also for parent positions on that task force. I'll be reaching out to the chair and co-chairs of our 7-Eleven committee so that we have that perspective also at the table. And then we have given positions on the task force for all three of our labor unions. And so it is a broad-based committee that has the purpose of creating a sustainable solution to solve this dilemma. And I really want to emphasize sustainable solution. We don't get out of the challenges of those three years that Mr. Manguala laid out for us and that Trustees Janquitz and Gracia have commented on. We do not get out of that dilemma by not creating a sustainable solution. We have to put forth a sustainable solution. So we look forward to a very comprehensive four, three-to-four-month process where we will engage in the redesign at the middle school level, you know, with an intended outcome of consolidation at that level in order to deal with this decline and this deficit that we're facing in year three. So thank you for your hard work. That concludes my comments on first interim.
Do I have any public comments on this item?
Yes, President Martine, there is a public comment. Martine Ortiz.
Norma Ortiz.
Norma Ortiz, yes.
Yes, I have a question. I saw the survey and what's the criteria you're choosing, Dr. Masetti, to pick the people in this task force? And did the 7-Eleven committee, that committee closed already? Because I was never sure about that in the email I sent you. I'm just curious. And another question. Based on the PowerPoint presentation, it seems like you guys will be closing a middle school 2022-23. So what school is that? Which school is that being contemplated? Because it says will, so that's already a choice that you guys, a decision that you guys made?
Actually, before Rosanna goes, I actually have a question right in front of me. And Rob, for you on clarification for the general public, that it's just your job to give us recommendations. And so through the PowerPoint presentation for the first interim, it's true that you're giving us a recommendation to close schools with the potential of elementary schools. And then it's up to us on how we determine how we go about doing that, correct? So that's where I wanted to clarify that for Ms. Ortiz.
That is correct. So it's, you know, when you build a budget, you build in certain assumptions. And so the assumption is that there will be at a minimum closure of a middle school. If there's not a closure of a middle school, there will need to be other cuts totaling $1 million for 21-22 and then additional cuts in the future. So in order to balance the books, there's a very significant cut that needs to occur. That is, that's something that needs to occur. That's not really a recommendation in terms of how it's executed. That's ultimately up to the board. The recommendation is potentially a middle school because we do have declining enrollment, but ultimately, if that doesn't occur, other cuts will need to happen.
Yep.
And then overall, recommendation is obviously it's the approval of the first interim update and a positive certification.
Yeah, so by approving the first interim tonight, it doesn't mean that the board is approving the closure of a middle school. The board is approving the budget, the first interim report that's being put forth by the Business Services Division, understanding that there are assumptions there around expenditure reductions that need to take place in order for the district to remain fiscally solvent. One of the assumptions on the expenditure reduction side is because of declining enrollment, in order to capture the million-dollar reduction that has been named as an assumption in this first interim report, one way to get there is through consolidation and closure at the middle school level. And so that is a potential recommendation from the Business Services Division. And the school district has put forth a mechanism to consider that recommendation through the middle school redesign task force. The district is not erecting the 7-Eleven committee for this round of potential consideration of school closure and/or consolidation. We have decided to utilize the middle school redesign task force to look at, study the issue, understand the dilemma, and put forth recommendations for the school board to consider later this spring, which is when the school board will take action potentially on those recommendations.
Additional comments, Mr. Ortiz, or excuse me? Mary Grace.
That concludes our public comments for this moment. President Martine.
Okay, thank you very much. We move to J, action items. J1, General Services. J1A, Adoption of California School Board Association Recommended July 2020 Policy Updates.
Second.
Is that you, Robin? I have a first by Ms. Robin and a second by Mr. Shunk. Do I have any public comment on this item?
There are no public comments for this item, President Martine.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstentions? School representative?
Aye.
Motion passes. J2, Business and Operations. J2A, 2020-21 First Interim Report.
So moved.
Second.
First by Mr. Gracia, a second by Ms. Water. Do I have public comment on this item?
There are no public comments for this item, President Martine.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? Student representative?
Aye.
Motion passes. J2B, Single Mode Fiber Installation, AMS.net, Change Order Number Two.
So moved. Second.
First by Mr. Gracia, a second by Mr. Shunk. Any public comment for this item?
There's no public comment for this item, President Martine.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Student body?
Aye.
Motion passes. J2C, Approval of Tableau Licenses?
So moved. Second.
First by Mr. Gracia, a second by Mr. Shunk. Any public comment on this item?
There's no public comment for this item, President Martine.
She said, go check out the website, please.
Yeah, and we are really excited about Tableau. We are going to be able to create some incredible public dashboards and a lot of really good data visualization for the school board and the community, especially around our progress on the strategic plan and a variety of data points. So we're excited to bring that to the board and to the NVUSD community.
Thank you. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Student representative?
Aye.
Abstentions? Nays? Passes. I feel like I did that already. I'm sorry if I'm repeating myself. Human Resources, J3A, Curative Labs COVID-19 Testing for NVUSD Employees.
So moved.
First by Mr. Gracia. Second by Mr. Rostado.
I have a quick question. As I understand it, we're going to bill employee health insurance. What happens if said insurance carrier doesn't pay it because it's not diagnostic?
Ms. Page?
Yeah, so if there's any issue with the insurance, either it doesn't cover it or if somebody doesn't have insurance or if they decline to put in their insurance information, then Curative has a contract with the state to fund it through the CARES Act. So it won't be a cost to the employee or to the district. So it won't be a cost to the, to the employee or to the district.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I just know of that question because of my wife's employment.
There are no public comments for this item, President Martine.
Aye.
Aye.
J3B, resolution 2114, local assignment options for teacher assignment, 2020, 2021.
So moved. Second.
Um, this is a resolution. A local. Oh yeah. Alright.
There are no public comments for this item, President Martine.
Oh, comments Vera Morales?
Yes. Trustee Martine?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Mares?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowitz?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Hurtado? Trustee Shank?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
The student board member, Magaña?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. J3C, frontline EHR and school nursing management virtual.
So moved. Second.
A first by Mr. Gracia, a second by Mr. Shank. Any public comment on this item?
There are no public comments for this item, President Martine.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Student body?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion passes. J4, instructional services. J4A, MOU between Napa Valley Unified School District and Napa County Office of Education.
So moved. Second.
A first by Mr. Gracia and a second by Mr. Shank. Do I have any public comment for this item?
There are no public comments for this item, President Martine.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Student body?
Aye.
Um, abstentions? Motion passes. Okay. J4B, 2021, or 202021, local control funding formula, LCFF, budget overview for parents.
So moved.
Put it on your microphone, please.
It's on the very first page that you're talking about. I saw that too.
Do you see where it's difficult to distinguish between? So I just thought I, that we should make sure that that's clear before we sent it out.
Mr. Manguala and Ms. Andrew Jennings, will you please note that?
Yes, we will note that. We did attempt to fix it, but the programming didn't allow it. But we will get it corrected. Thank you.
Move to approve.
Okay. So I have a first by Mr. Gracia. Second by Mr. Hurtado. Do I have any public comment on this item?
There are no public comments for this item, President Martine.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Student body?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion passes. J4C, MOU between NVUSD and Community Pro Suite for MVAE?
So moved. Second.
First by Mr. Gracia, second by Mr. Shank. Do I have any public comment on this item?
There are no public comments for this item, President Martine.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Student body?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion passes. J5, operational services. J5A, contract for services with Whole Life Nutrition.
So moved.
A first by Mr. David Gracia and a second by Mr. Jose Hurtado. Do I have any public comment?
There are no, there are no public comments for this item, President Martine.
Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Student body?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion passes. J6, school planning and construction. Uh, J6A, SPC number 12.19-20, request for maintenance of newly installed turf at Memorial Stadium by Valley Precision grading.
So moved.
Second. Uh, first and second, do I have any public comment on this item?
There are no public comments for this item, President Martine.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Student body?
Aye.
Abstention? Motion passes. J6B, SPC number 12 dot 18 dash 20, request for filing the notice of completion of the replacement of synthetic turf field at Memorial Stadium.
So moved. Second.
A first by Mr. Gracia and a second by Elba Gonzalez Mares. Do I have any public comment on this item?
There are no public comments for this item, President Martine.
Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Student body?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion passes. J6C, SPC number 16 dash, dot 29 dash 17, request of filing of notice of completion for campus-wide security fencing at Donaldson Way.
So moved. Second.
First by Ms. Water, a second by Mr. David Gracia. Do I have public comment for this item?
There are no public, there are no public comments, President Martine.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Student body?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion passes. Sorry, my paper doesn't have the correct spacing. J6D, correct? Uh, SPC number 29 dot 101 dash 17, request for filing the notice of completion for Irene Snow Elementary School project?
So moved.
First by Mr. Gracia?
Second.
Second by Mr. Shank. Do I have any public comment for this item?
There are no public comments for this item, President Martine.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Student body?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion passes. J6E, SPC number 15 dot 53 dash 17, request for filing the notice of completion for finishing kitchens phase one, McPherson and Shearer Elementary Schools.
So moved.
Second. A first by Mr. David Gracia, a second by Ms. Water.
Did we ever get our outstanding finishing kitchen issues resolved? We must have if we're filing the notice of completion.
Mr. Pearson?
Yes, that's correct, Trustee Shank.
I thought that was central kitchen. He did get that.
Oh, you're talking about the central, uh, yes. It was. Yeah, that was a central kitchen issue.
Okay. So I have a first by Mr. David Gracia, a second by Ms. Waters. Do we have public comment for this item?
There are no public comments for this item, President Martine.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Student body?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion passes. Okay. J6F, SPC number 15 dot 54 dash 17, request for filing the notice of completion for finishing kitchen phase two, Vichy and Browns Valley Elementary Schools.
So moved. Second.
Okay. A first by Mr. David Gracia and a second by Mr. Shank. Any public comment on these items?
There are no public comment for this item, President Martine.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Student representative?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion passes. J6G, SPC number 1 dot 3 dash 21, request for, request for updated implementation plan.
Uh, one more. Mr. Pearson, do you have a, a brief presentation on this action item?
Yes, we do, uh, Dr. Mercedes. So I'm going to introduce Kelly Jurgensen, our bond program manager with Van Pelt Corporation. And, uh, Ms. Jurgensen is going to lead us through a quick, uh, presentation of the updated implementation plan before, uh, the board approves. So Kelly, take it away.
All right. Uh, thank you, President Martine. Thank you, Dr. Mercedes and board members. So as always, we are here under goal four, tactical proactive and efficient asset management. Um, the updated implementation plan tonight, um, is a living document that I know many of you have seen several times. Just a quick reminder that this is a document that we try to update annually or as needed. In this case, we're coming to you a little bit shy of a year, but we wanted to get a head start on 2021. Um, we are here to address the needs of the capital improvement program and adjust funding sources as needed as our plan for the improvement of facilities at Napa Valley grows and changes over time. So in doing that, we changed the budget. All right. So we'll let you be able to actually see this document on the screen, hopefully. And I know it's also available in the board packets. Um, so we're keeping consistent with the format that was used in last year's implementation plan with the exception that we've added some call, comments so that the trustees and the public can have a better understanding of the difference between the 2020 implementation plan and the new 2021, uh, recommendations. So you, the columns can see, in those columns, you can see the difference. And you can note that some of the projects required some additional funding. Some gave a little bit of funding back and, um, it just allows us to track over time the changes. The significant changes in this plan were driven by increased funding. Um, we had some confirmed funding that will be residing in Fund 35 for career technology at the farm. So that is down here. Sorry, can't view the entire document and see it at the same time. Um, we also secured additional funding that will go into Fund 35 for the Napa Junction Elementary School from the Office of Public School Construction. So that is part of the state matching funds program similar to the money that we are currently tracking and have already received from the Office of Public School Construction for the Irene Snow Project, which is also tracked in this budget. Um, in addition to that, we continue to use the funds received from OPSC for Irene Snow, as I mentioned, and the funding collected from developer fees, which resides in Fund 25. So our big changes that I wanted to highlight is the additional 11.5 million that resides in Fund 35 when we receive it from the state. Um, we also received a million dollar donation for the Napa Junction Elementary School Project from the Vitners, um, which was, uh, ushered through the foundation. And we've just made some changes up and down on various projects and balancing. So I'm going to scroll down. I apologize if you can't look at the entire document all at once. So you can see the breakdown, including our interest, and it is just a roadmap for what comes next in our capital improvement plan.
Thank you, Ms. Jurgensen.
Move to approve.
Does anybody have any questions before we proceed? Okay. So I have a, thank you for the presentation.
That we, um, presented that information to be more transparent about what, um, what was being done and the phasing in of that and the capital contributions to date, et cetera, et cetera. So thanks for the follow-up, you guys.
Thank you.
I have a first by Mr. David Gracia and a second by Mr. Shank. Do I have any public comment for this item?
There are no public comments for this item, President Martine.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Student body?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion passes. Informational items under this section do not require board action. K1, business and operations. K1A, enrollment report.
I just wanted to highlight in this report, the very small number of middle school students that are enrolled. Uh, it's almost half of the number of high school students. So this is just really to highlight how these smaller cohorts are really beginning to move through the middle school system and, uh, eventually will make their way to the high school level.
Additional comments?
He's retired.
Sorry, I have much more fun with the inner districts.
Oh, she's stalling. I think she wants to next, to extend the meeting, huh? An overview of the past 16 years?
Maybe your, um, T-shirt, um, making business?
Additional suggestions and comments from board members and superintendent?
I did have one closing comment. I wanted to highlight the good work being done by the MNO staff with the new fit reports as referenced by trustee Jankowitz earlier. The data has been created in-house for the first time and has resulted in an opportunity to fix some of the issues which previously brought scores down and allows for the standardization of the data across site reports. It should result in substantial improvements to the SARC reports that we will see later this school year. Job well done on leveling up your process.
Um, just my last comments are, I really need to extend a really big thank you to Ms. Julie Pressy, cause she's just a wonderful human being, always checking in on us. If you have not been present, she will support you 120% along the way. So a big shout out and virtual to Ms., um, Julie Pressy. And then also many, many thanks to Gil Young and her staff for, um, the beautiful points that. I was just barely gonna go shopping this week. They're gorgeous. So, thank you. Future agenda items you'd like to put out there, Joe?
No, I'm waiting to give that big motion at the end. Well, go ahead, Mr. Crowd, please.
You two go ahead and close this meeting. Um, adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Has still never failed.
Student body?
Aye.
We are officially adjourned.
Okay. Yeah. Let's have a standing ovation for our.